Good evening.
I'm on mute. How are you, Jeff?
Good, all right. Good evening.
Hey, guys.
Hello.
Hey.
Oh, lost my mouse. Where did the mouse go? There it is. How are you?
I get it there.
Yeah, I'm in.
Good evening, everybody.
How are you?
How are you?
Good evening.
You all?
Excuse me.
I'm hearing a lot of toddlers yelling and a wife yelling.
That happens sometimes.
The kid upstairs is screaming too.
Yeah, something, something is afoot. What's that?
Is it a full moon?
I don't know.
Could be.
It's not good.
At my house, it's typically me doing the, you know, jumping up and down.
Especially after the Bruins win, right?
Yeah, well, or the Friars.
Oh.
They're playing, they're playing tonight at 6:30 Yukon, so I'll be missing that.
I wanted Emily to go to Yukon just because I like their mascot. She has zero desire to do it, but. All right, 6:30, so I will open the meeting. And I will entertain a motion to convene an executive session.
So moved.
Okay. This is to discuss reputation or character rather than professional competence of a municipal employee. All in, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you Chris. All in favor, David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. Excellent, thank you.
Okay, let's see, let's see, let's see.
I think the last time we did that, I accidentally left the meeting and had to log back in again.
This is poor designed to put the buttons right that close together.
Right.
I always, I always make sure I don't click on the end meeting for all because I.
Yeah, that would be awkward too.
Yeah, text everybody.
Actually, we're early, so yeah, like six minutes. It's never happens.
Remember when there only be one or two people in the select room for these meetings?
I know. Well, that's kind of why when we came back on, I'm like, wait a minute, why, why aren't there any people here? But because we're still early.
How many people were at the joint meeting on Saturday?
Forty-three or forty-four.
Was it really?
Yeah.
There was, it was times where there was two full, two or three full screens worth.
Yeah. But to your point, Greg, I, you know, people take the opportunities to call in when, when it's, you know, virtual.
Yeah.
I do think it was, I, I mean, I, I have to say that I am pretty impressed that there were, in theory, if everybody went from all of the boards, there were nineteen of us and we discussed things all morning long. And we were wrapped up at twelve oh nine. Like, that's pretty impressive.
Think we should take some lessons from that for selecting a meeting. I'm only kidding.
Yes, please. I know. So much to be done. So did you hear anything about the roads that are anything, Greg, for them this morning? Everything was pretty good?
I talked to Justin today. He said it was, I mean, we're going through salt.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, like it's in overtime because Justin gets frustrated because he has to salt it overnight and then it rains, so he has to salt it again. So, yeah, I know you know this, like, but it's, it's, and so I don't, so Justin said, like, we got to keep an eye on that account because it's, we're, we're burning money, not burning money. We're sprinkling money all over the good streets of Maynard is what we're doing.
Yes.
So, yeah.
Yeah, it is. It's like, that's, I think, actually, I was watching the weather a little while ago and they were saying the storm on, this storm on Thursday is going to be like a long duration, like start Thursday and really, really end on Saturday. So it's like, you're not going to get a lot of snow, but it's just going to be long. So I mean, again, that's the overtime and.
That's a lot, that's costly. Yep. Yep.
Hopefully, it's the last one.
I know.
I guess not, not if you listen to Groundhog, I guess.
Actually, the last few years, we've not got our first big snow until this February, late February.
Yeah.
Couple, a couple ahead. I don't know, my, I think in Keene and up in that way, ninety, you know, on the other side of ninety-one this morning, they got snow.
Oh, did they?
Through the west, yeah, they got some snow.
They were saying like on Thursday, they were predicting today to be snow, like six inches.
It was supposed to originally be, yes, right.
Yeah, but.
Well, I, let me tell you something, anything is better than what happened in Texas, so.
Well, yes, because they don't own plows or anything else.
And they're not used to that.
No.
Even their turbines are all frozen.
I did see someone snowboarding, the video of somebody snowboarding down one of the streets in, in San Antonio, so.
Did you see the picture of the, the, the power company with the helicopter spraying de-icer on the, on the turbine?
Yeah.
That's, that's, that's tough business right there. It's got to be treacherous, but yeah, they're up there with a big, big wand spraying in the turbine. It's.
Wow.
Not good. I don't, I think this afternoon, when the five o'clock news came on, they were still talking about three and a half to four million people without power.
Just crazy.
The state of Texas mostly just state-run power sources, it seems, that they are, because it seems like it's, you know, it's exclusive to Texas.
He is the man of the hour, Justin.
Hi, Justin. Yeah.
Get those plows ready for Thursday.
We're always ready.
Yeah, I know you are.
They're probably a little tired, but you're ready.
Yeah, the ice storms are the hard ones. That's the conversation we had today, last night and this morning. Were you guys out, Justine?
Uh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, those are the, those are the dangerous ones, those, those quick ice events.
Yeah, and then you don't want it to, and that's the thing, is you want to salt it enough that doesn't, you know, that it's safe, but then by noon time, it's completely wet and you just, you know, yeah.
Wasted thousands of dollars down the drain?
But no, because you made it safe for the residents in the morning, but.
Correct.
But yes.
Those are the tough ones.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Let's see, waiting one more minute, I think, yep. Not used to being out of executive session this early. Heard too efficient. All right. Seven o'clock, I will start by opening the regular session of the Board of Selectment meeting. And I'll read the script. As a preliminary matter, this is Justine St. John, Chair of the Select Board. Permit me to confirm all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. David?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I am here also. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Greg?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
And I see Justin is on the call as well. You see Chief Noble and Stephanie. So, good evening. This open meeting of the Maynard Select Board is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, twenty twenty, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID nineteen virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID nineteen virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's order suspends a requirement of open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Select Board is convening by video conference via Zoom. It is also being live streamed on Facebook and, and recorded. I do want to note that we do not monitor the comments. We will not be responding to comments via Facebook or in the chat. The only way to actually participate in the meeting is to call into Zoom and be recognized in this format. So, sorry, it's posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be recaptured by the recording. All the materials for this meeting, except any executive session materials, are available on board docs. And we recommend the members and the public follow the agenda as posted on board docs unless and otherwise. Easiest way to find that is the town, the town website, Board of Selectmen page, tonight's meeting packet. We're now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the chair will go down the line of members inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate meeting minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. For items of public comment, after members have spoken, the chair will inform public comment as follows. The chair will ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. And once the chair has a list of all public commentators, I'll call each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. And finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. So, that all being said, I will turn it over to item B, which is public comments. Are there any public comments this evening?
I'd like to make a public comment. Veronica Zolli, Veronica Zolina, two hundred great road manager.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. There are two items that I'd like to address. The first is that I noticed the Town Administrator's evaluation is on the agenda for this evening. And I just wanted to say that as a member of the Board of Maydog, the Maynard Dog Owners Group that runs the Maynard Dog Park, I've had several occasions to interact with our Town Administrator. In the last few years, I've found him to be extremely receptive and supportive and accessible and very invested in the town and its residents. And I just wanted to say that to the board.
Thank you.
Thank you. The other item I wanted to bring to the board's attention, it's not, nothing that's on the agenda for tonight, but I just wanted to kind of throw it out there for the board's future consideration. I'm an attorney and I've been assisting pro bono some of the residents of Railroad Street in their interactions with the landlord and the troubles that they've had with the apartments that they rent. It's come to my attention that a lawsuit was filed by the town on behalf of the Board of Health against the landlord of the Railroad Street Apartments regarding his failure to make repairs as ordered by the Board of Health. What I wanted to ask the board to think about and perhaps discuss at future meetings is the possibility that that lawsuit will resolve by some sort of settlement. I'm sure it will resolve without an actual trial at some point in the future. And the idea arose in a conversation I had with some of the residents there that it would be really helpful if as part of any settlement with the town, there was an arrangement made to create a fund for tenants, a monetary fund to try to remunerate the tenants who have been dealing with substandard and really abhorrent conditions for a long period of time, which would involve some complexity in terms of, you know, who gets what and how you allocate funds. But in general, I think it would be something really helpful for the Board of Selectmen to consider in guiding Town Council as far as how they would like resolution to happen at some point. So, thank you for your consideration of that.
Thank you. Anyone else have any additional comments? All right, then we will move on to the next item on the agenda, the acceptance of minutes, and I will entertain a motion.
I'll move to accept and approve the meeting minutes of February second, twenty twenty-one, as shown and authorized to use digital signatures if approved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Armand. Any discussion regarding these minutes? No? All right, all in favor? Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yeah.
And I am a S. All right, on to correspondences. I will entertain a motion.
Move to accept the list of fourteen correspondence A and O.
A through O.
All eight through O as presented. Yeah.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chris. All right, any questions about any of the correspondence that is listed here? Lots of them today. Greg, I just had a quick question about Civico, the Coolidge School project. So it seems to be moving forward. I mean, we, we haven't really heard that much of an update lately, so I was just making sure, just seeing how, it seems like they're giving kind of an update, but I just wasn't sure if everything's going as planned or whether there are any issues or.
It's not as quick as I was hoping, obviously, but I, I don't know how much of that has contributed to COVID or their interactions with, at the state level. You can see where they're, where they're, I do appreciate their transparency, like, I, I believe they're honest in where they are with their processes and applications. And I think I'm actually scheduled to meet with them tomorrow, just so I can kind of hear them first person where they are. So, this is good. I mean, they're, they're, it is showing inside of good faith that they are moving forward. So, this is good. I mean, they're, it is showing inside of good faith that they are moving forward. But how fast they're actually moving, I'm not, I'll be able to kind of better gauge tomorrow.
Okay, I'm just curious.
No, I look forward to this, of course, where I think we're all excited to get this show on the road, but I understand they're also relatively smaller firm, so they're, you know, they're up in the depth of the doubt.
Anyone else have anything? All right, all in favor? Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And I am a S. Thank you. I will entertain a motion regarding a consent agenda item.
I will, go ahead, Chris.
All right, move to approve the one consent agenda item as presented and authorizing the use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Okay, thanks, Jeff. All right, any questions? All right, all in favor? Jeff?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I am a S. Thank you. All right, moving on to item number seven. This is the discussion with the Cespa Centennial Steering Committee. I'm just wondering, so, hi Lindsay, I see that you're on. And I'm curious, do you, so, do you need to, you posted as a public meeting, do you need to open your meeting then? Do you have enough Board members to open your meeting?
Um, I think we have, hmm, one, two, three, at least three people. No, I don't think we do, because there are 11 on our committee, so I don't need to, correct? Because that's not quorum.
Yeah, you don't have a quorum.
Okay.
All right, so, so why don't you, so Greg, did you have anything before we?
I was just gonna, Lindsay, so you did good. Just Lindsay, tell everybody who you are.
Hi, thank you. I'm Lindsay McConkey. I'm the Vice Chair of the Cespa Centennial Committee in town. Is it okay if I share my screen or should I not? I know that that deck was shared in advance. I can just go through it verbally.
If you want, do you want, how about we show the screen just to make sure we're all looking at the same thing?
Give me permission.
All right, try it now.
Okay. All right, are you all looking at a blue slide that says, okay, great. So we put this together, this will just help frame the conversation as I go through. Before I move forward, I'm assuming that you all have, you all have an idea of what the Cespa Centennial Committee is. Is there anyone for whom I need to give more context or can I just move forward?
Think you can move forward.
Can move forward. All right, so this is just a report. We, we thought it might be helpful to provide you a report on where we are now and what we've been up to, because I don't think we have in about a year or so. So these are the 2020 Committee members, and then just very recently in 2021, we've added Elizabeth McConkey. She is in fact related to me, that's my sister. Kim Flesh. So this is the full committee as of now, which we're really happy about. We have a lot of people to help with the activity. So just a brief look at some past programming and activity, 2017, 2018, we were kind of kicking off and getting started and did a few small events and participated in Maynard Fest, started working with a local vendor to create branded items like t-shirts and sweatshirts, which we continued to sell into 2019 and 2020. That's our main source of revenue right now. In 2019, we participated in Maynard Fest. We had a farmer's market table to sell some of our items and David Mark on our committee has been actively for quite some time writing a book about the history of Maynard, which is now published. I'll get to that shortly. In 2020, we had, we had an event to open our time capsule, which was closed at the last anniversary celebration, but of course that was canceled. It was scheduled for April. So we spent the summer, I think probably like most people who are on committees where you have in-person events, trying to figure out what we could do instead. And in the fall, we actually were able to come up with some ways to engage the town. So we had a drive-in movie in October. We showed Back to the Future. And we had some great partners who helped with that. The Beijing School was kind enough to offer space. We use their parking lot. We worked with the Cultural Council. It was, it was great. It was very well received. We definitely had over 200, 250 people there, maybe about 100 cars. The DPW and the Maynard Police Department were hugely helpful, so it was really fun. We got some press on that, which I'll show you in a little bit. And then around the holidays, we had a holiday decoration contest where we invited people on Facebook to enter and people decorated their houses and members of the committee judged the decorations. And we asked Market Basket to provide gift cards as rewards for people. And that was really fun. I can tell you, having driven around and looked at all the lights, it was really fun to be a judge. We had our virtual book launch, which, you know, the book is now for sale. I think we're, we ordered 600 books and we're just under 300 sold right now. I'm not sure the exact number. And we continue to sell our branded items on the first of the year. I don't know if any of you heard, but the historic fire station, historic whistle on the fire station blew. So the Chief of the Fire Department was really helpful in getting that done, as were members of the Maynard Historic Commission. So the book is completed and now for sale. So this is upcoming programming and activity. One caveat on this, I should say that a lot of the activity that's on here is still TBD. It's stuff that we're talking about or, so, you know, if you see anything on here and think I had no idea that that was finalized, it may, it may not be. I just wanted, we wanted to include the full picture here for you to give you all an idea of the potential full, you know, suite of activities that might happen in the coming year. And the goal of all this activity is really just to do what we can, given the pandemic and the circumstances that we're all faced with, to, you know, engage the community and create some opportunities for engaging with Maynard's history and with Maynard's future and celebrating the history of the town. So we were partnering with some other organizations like Art Space. We are partnering with Amory's Tomb. We have a, they're creating a beer in the style of a corn lager, a pre-prohibition corn lager that was popular in the 1870s. And we have just launched a competition on Facebook. People are invited to suggest names for the beer and Amory is going, Amory's Tomb is going to pick a finalist. So we're trying to come up with creative ways to celebrate Maynard. And these are, these are some of the things we've come up with. I'm going to just advance, and then this is just some of the press that we've gotten thus far, both local press in Beacon Villager and then also just our engagement on Facebook. And we just have a newly created Instagram account. So we've had a lot of engagements on social media, which I hope we will continue to do. I think, oh, this is our financial info, really high level here. I didn't want to give you too deep a dive on our finances, largely because I think that that could be a whole other presentation. But just that we have, you know, our revenue streamer, these branded items and our book sales. We have received some donations and will definitely be pursuing other, both sponsorships and donations for events that are happening in the coming year. Particularly, we hope to be able to have a parade and fireworks toward the end of the year. And I think that provides some sponsorship opportunities. And then we also did receive a grant last year with the help of Kate Hogan from the Mass Office of Travel and Tourism. And given the pandemic, we were given another year to spend that money down. So we still do have a little bit of that left that we're spending down. Okay, that's the end. So I'll stop there.
Great. And I mean, thank, thank you and thank you, the Committee for everything that you all have done and for the ability to pivot and still make this, you know, engaging and exciting, even though it wasn't able to happen the way that it was planned. And I think that it's really important that you all are figuring a way through it. And I really appreciate that.
Well, thank you. We're trying. So I'm glad to hear that, that you're, we are welcoming our pivot because we're, we're doing what we can.
Does anyone have any questions for Lindsay, comments, or for the Committee itself?
I think you guys are doing a great job, given a very stressful year in which to plan this. And I, you know, I also just wanted to point out that, you know, we're having events a couple of years leading up. And if something needs to be pushed to next year because of the pandemic, I don't see any problem with that. So I think whatever, whatever works and, you know, celebrates the town, you know, the exact year doesn't matter. So keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
And since the drive, drive-in was so successful, maybe you should do another one.
It's a great suggestion. You know, it's funny, the company that, that did the drive-through for us just called the other day and left a message saying, just wondering if you want to book another one. So it's possible that the Committee would do another one. I think if we could get someone to sponsor it, it would be a nice community engagement activity. People really, really enjoyed it. So the Committee would love to do it again in the spring if we can.
Great. All right, anyone else?
Thank you. All right.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks, the whole Committee.
We look forward, we look forward to seeing the rest of it, kind of fruition.
Oh, yeah.
All right, moving on to item eight. And this is a discussion regarding athletic areas and parks. Greg?
So as most of the departments are looking over their rules and regulations and policies, when Justin DiMarco has been all over it too, and particularly rule, parks, playgrounds, and, and he's got a couple of really helpful suggestions, I think we should hear. It's also important context that we've been having a different sort of relationship with the school committee, school department in particular. This has a little bit of tones of that, but Justin can get into it a little bit more.
Good evening, everybody. Would you like me to talk, Justine?
Yes.
So, good evening, everybody. Justin Mark, a DPW Director. So I'm presenting what is a streamlined approach to rules and regulations pertaining to the athletic fields, parks across the town of Maynard. Unfortunately, most residents and people who just come to the community to utilize our parks don't realize that the ownership is broken up into three different communities, three different committees. The Board of Selectmen, the School Committee, and the Conservation Committee. Each one of those committees has some archaic rules and regulations pertaining to these facilities. So I'm looking to streamline rules and regulations that adhere to all three of the designated authorities. Tonight, we're just looking to start a discussion and conversation to kind of trigger what the Board of Selectmen are looking forward and maybe some ideas that you might want to include. I have presented this to the School Committee, and I believe I'm on their next agenda. And we have presented this to the Conservation Committee, who has already reviewed it and has endorsed it, which is part of the packet as well. And then what we're looking for in the end is a unified rules and regulations that we can post, make clear and transparent to anybody that uses the parks and the facilities around town.
Okay, sounds good. Does anyone have any questions for Justin? Comments? Reading these, reading these over?
I wanted to question the no dogs, which seemed a bit restrictive, that you couldn't say have a dog in, you know, a center of park bench in Carbone Park if you're a responsible owner and wanting to pick up after the dog.
Yeah, part of the reason that we have that is based off of some of our MS4 problems. That's why you see no feeding of wild animals, et cetera. It would be great if people actually adhere to that, Jeff, and I would tell you that most honest people do. There's a lot of people that do not. To try to make sure that we stay in line with our MS4 requirements, we have limited the use of the dog facility at the solar field, Maydog, which we technically have the luxury of having a dog park in town. That's why we put the restriction on there to kind of follow our MS4 guidelines and knowing that we had an option.
What's the reason then not to say you can have a dog, but you make the rule, you must pick up after the dog, which would target only those who are currently?
You can. It's more of the enforcement. How many people are going to go out there and force, so you're going to catch a person in the act. It's a little tougher. Part of the regulations that you see on these rules for like some of the fines are based off of permitting, which we could chase down. So if we permitted out alumni field to say, I don't know, Pop Warner, and then the next day we show up and there's trash littered everywhere, we know who to go, go talk to. Just regular passerby's, people that just utilize the park, unless you're there on site catching them, you don't necessarily have enforcement or a way to stop that outside of some people complaining. But if you're not catching someone in the act, it's very hard to prove them with a fine.
But isn't that true if the rules weren't the other way too?
It is, but it helps to discourage the use of the park, meaning to limit the potential for that abuse.
All right, anyone else have any questions? Any concerns about the as written?
Is there a reason we split the ownership with the School Committee for, I forget which park it is, for number, for Crow Park? Is there a reason we don't just say we'll take it or they take it? I?
I'm glad you brought that up, Jeff. Nice catch. I did that on purpose. I was hoping that would come up in conversation. So before I put this all together, I've done some significant deed research on all of these facilities, including past town meeting votes and adoption of how we got some of the, some of the properties. So technically, within my deed research, Crow Park belongs to the school district, but I know in conversations past with, I believe David and Becky and some others in town, Crow Park has always kind of been allowed use by the BOS for years and years and years. Unfortunately, I don't have any documentation that approves that. The town warrant, I'm sorry, the town meeting vote that allowed the town to acquire that property was a gift, and it was specifically gifted to the school department. So I brought that up for this conversation, just so that all the boards and authorities know where their authority lies, who is responsible for what, et cetera. But again, this could be a conversation that we have and maybe we have, that's why there's no motion to accept at this point. I just want to have the conversation.
That would be, that would be a, an interesting conversation to have. My understanding of Crow Park was that it was indeed a gift, and it was gifted to always be utilized strictly as parkland. That's why there've been some issues with, you know, even when, when there was talk about where to locate a potential fire station and Crow Park came in, there would have been legislative approval required and everything else that would have gone into it. There were issues about whether or not the skate park at the time that the skate park was created and then when it was taken down as to how the agreement with the family of Mr. Crow, who basically gave it to the town upon his death, is what I understand. But I have always been on the understanding that it was, that it was actually given to the town. It's interesting to hear that it was given to the school or perhaps both entities. But I have always thought that it was, that it was town property. Thus, why we approve when the, the baseball leagues want to use Crow Park over the summer. We're the ones that approve it. Whenever anybody wants to use the park. Becky, you might have more insight as well.
Yeah, in, in my time with the Board of Selectmen Town Administrator, all permitting has come through to the Board of Selectmen to issue permits, so. I was shocked when we got the paperwork from Justin and I'm glad in a way because it will bring it to surface on who needs to authorize and coordinate all the scheduling there. I don't mind it going off my plate.
So, so David, that's actually the reason why I brought it up. So I believe that the initial aspect of it was that it was a gift to the town. The way that the warrant was written up is in the end, it was gifted to the school department, which was then voted on by town meeting. So that's why I think there is a little bit of looseness with that. And but again, we could clear that up. And that's one of those things where this is the start of that discussion.
How many years ago was that? Do you know, Justin? Do you remember what year?
I don't have it off the top of my head, but I do have a file in my office. I chased down a bunch of this. I think actually I had some email exchanges with the School Committee regarding this as well, when we were finalizing the MOA Agreement for Maintenance between this town and the school regarding athletic fields. That's when I started doing the research on this. But what I'll do is I'll follow up to, and I'll try to provide all that documentation for discussion in the future as well.
Because I think Crow Park actually isn't just the fenced off area. The actual crow land includes some woodlands that go off. Because I think Crow Park actually isn't just the fenced off area. The actual crow land includes some woodlands that go off into the back.
There's a green meadow there.
Yeah, over behind Green Meadow and between whatever the road is that's, that's there. It's a significant piece of land beyond just the park as we know it as the fenced off area. And, you know, even back in the old days, before I moved to Maynard, there was a bandstand that everybody talks about, the old timers talk about, that was used exclusively for town events. And it's, it seems very odd that it would have been school property. But if that's the way it is, that's the way it is. The one other point that I would make before we leave this discussion, I think it's important that we do delineate who is responsible for what property and what parks, because too often, the Board of Selectmen gets blamed, for lack of a better word, and we all should be on the same page for issues pertaining to the football field, alumni field, and how, you know, you know, oh, we're not leasing, we're not allowing certain people to use it. It's not our call. We're not, you know, there's this, you know, it's just, and it's repeated a lot. So, you know, just so that people know who the right entity is to go to, to ask or to make their concerns known is important, that it all doesn't just fall down on this body. That the, the parties that are responsible should take responsibility for those properties that are theirs and not just the revenue.
Yeah, this is the start of that, Dave, and I think that's really is also to kind of help guide residents. I want to make, in the end, I'm really hoping that we can have an interconnection on our website that pertains to all rules and regulations with some hyperlinks to the authorities for permitting, et cetera, just to make it one streamlined location where anybody can go to the town website and it will bring you to school dude if you're looking to rent athletic fields on school property. It will bring you to the Board of, Board of Selectmen Office, which would be Becky potentially, for permits regarding any BOS property, and then go down to Caitlin Young for any cost call. And try to make this a streamlined approach. I've, since I've been in town, this is one of the most confusing aspects of phone calls that we get from residents and non-residents looking to utilize what, where they have to go through. So we're just looking to clean that up.
How about DJ's, DJ's Field, the Little League Field? Is that considered town property or school property?
So that is all of alumni is one parcel, and that is school property. And then DJ's Field kind of has an agreement with the school where they, um, they're able to fundraise with their banners in the, in the outfield, and they actually utilize that resource to do the field maintenance.
Right.
Technically, the DPW doesn't do the field maintenance on DJ Field. They do that through volunteerism and through revenue that they provide from their youth organization and their sponsorship program. It's something that we tried to encourage at the Fowler Field, the new Fowler Field for the youth soccer, kind of do something very similar. When you want high quality athletic fields, it comes at a pretty expensive cost, much further than just mowing the lawn. You have to provide fertilization. You have to provide different mechanical approaches to it, aeration, irrigation, et cetera. There's a, there's a large cost.
Yeah, the, you know, DJ's Field is a beautiful field, you know, it's, it's, I know it's done professionally by a, by a landscape guy. And then right next door is the softball field that the girls play on. And you look at the, at the difference in quality of the turf, and it's just not equitable. And it's, that's, you know, something that should be, you know, considered and looked into. And look at the model that's being used by DJ's Field to see if that would be beneficial for the softball field.
Absolutely, David. I want to say six months ago, there was a parent of a softball player that reached out to me regarding some improvements that can be made at that field location, the softball field next to DJ. I recommended that they go to CPC fencing, netting, replacement of some of the areas that they have on the rec field. And COVID kind of hit, and I didn't hear much from, from that organization. But I encouraged them to, to use CPC funds for some of the existing recreation that we have that is already failing. At this point, I think that's a better use of CPC funding.
Thanks.
Where do we have the Marble Farm Park up in here?
So their only reason I didn't put Marble Farm Park on there yet is it's technically not a park. So again, as CPC has not finalized that, Jeff, once they do, this can always be amended. And this is really the start of a bigger conversation. And once we get this kind of streamlined, we'll, we'll come back with amendments as we add parks. If there's rules that need to be adjusted in a year that we find aren't conducive to Maynard, we can always adjust them in the future. But I think getting all three major players in regards to this on the same page from the get-go will just make that process easier.
Well, I think this was an important discussion, especially to Crow Park. I mean, it's important that we get that settled.
So what will, what will Marble Farm be? Will that be Board of Selectmen or Conservation?
So technically, right now, that property is Board of Selectmen DPW. So that would be, yeah, that would be Board of Selectmen property. And then the reason I'm bringing this up is technically the DPW's task of maintaining all of this. So for me, it'd just make my life easier if everybody is on the same page.
Anyone else have any other questions? I did have one question, Justin, about the, you say that, so that the school department, I know you're going to meet with the school department at their meeting. But it says, so their regulations don't cover the use of athletic fields and parks, only the facility? So if, if someone is using, so if someone's using the field for lacrosse, for example, or something like that for alumni, there aren't any regulations currently right now to cover that?
So under their adopted rules and regulations, they don't have anything under the athletic field. So the, part of the reason I brought this up is we have, at every park, when you walk in, each sign is different. Kind of making that confusion of rules and regs. And most of the signs don't actually represent the real rules and regulations, because some of them don't even exist. So they're just slapped up. And really, Mike Chief Noble couldn't even enforce it. He could and couldn't at that point, because it's not technically adopted. So part of this issue is to kind of help streamline that process, especially if we have a real problem in the future. And the school department's permitting process might highlight it, but I'm not on school. So I really want it adopted in their rules and regulations and then adopted on our applications. Whether we have our own application, which the Board of Selectmen currently have, and then the school continues to use school dude, we would just add an addendum with the rules and regulations that are with the town of Maynard seal on it, meaning approved by all three bodies, and we can just attach it so that the school department doesn't need to change the way in which they permit. We don't need to change the way in which we permit. We just, we're going to put a streamlined process.
All right. Anybody else have any other questions or comments? For the moment regarding, regarding even any of the rules or regulations that are, that are being proposed? I see, so I see Lydia has a question or comment. Go ahead, Lydia.
I just want to say that, first of all, this, we have been working on rewriting our permitting and, and rules for the fields, just because we have been asked by several of the clubs that, whether, if they could have people advertise in order for them to generate money to help take care of the field. And we also are aware of the fact that there is no signage posted, or at least if there is, it's, it's completely different from one field to the next. And so that was another thing we were addressing. This actually is the first I've heard of this. So I was unaware that these conversations were going on. I had no idea that Justin was coming to our next meeting, and so this is all news to me. So I, I, I'm interested to know more about this. So anyway, that's it. Thank you.
All right. So I will tell you, Lydia, so I first found out about it four days ago when I checked the agenda. So, so we haven't known about it a lot longer than you. But no, I think it's good, and it'll be a jumping off point for everybody. And, you know, we can all get on the same page.
One final comment, if I may, if I may, Justin, one of the things I noticed, and I don't have it up anymore, but I noticed on the, the list of rules and regs, it said field use only by permit. I am assuming that that does not preclude a bunch of neighborhood kids from going out and playing football on alumni field and stuff. You're talking, I assume this is for organized, you know, where people show up with referees and everything else, that type of a, of an organized event.
So Dave, all of the public parks and depending on this, how the School Committee wants to go to, right now, the town of Maynard is very loose. Anybody can go and utilize the facilities. The reason that field used by permit only is to avoid a situation where, say, a neighborhood group of kids is playing on alumni field, and there is a permit that was given to, say, a youth sport. Hold of the responsibility and the authority to utilize that field at that time. But I would never discourage anybody from utilizing public parks, public athletic fields. But again, I'm not the end authority here, but I don't, I doubt the School Committee would do the same here.
No, I, I, I agree. I just want to make sure that, that everyone's on the same page with that.
Yeah, I mean, I know you recently know we've had some requests due to COVID for some local businesses utilizing the parks and that we, you guys have been signing off on permits. I just want to make sure that if they were to show up and say, you know, Coolidge School, and there's a bunch of kids that they know they can present that permit, have the kids removed or move or ask them to go along. But if for some reason they refuse to, and a police officer was called, they could produce a permit and then the rules and regs would apply, so.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Last time I'm asking, anybody else have anything? All right. All right, Justin, thank you. I, I look forward to further conversations and see, and I look forward to the, the product that comes back after you've gone to School Committee and, and what we have when we come back.
Right. I'll let you know how the School Committee goes, and it might be conducive in the end to have a joint meeting with Conservation BOS and the school to kind of finalize, maybe adopt it in one swoop, kind of with everything on the table. So.
Sounds great. All right, sounds good. So then let us move to, we're going to keep Justin for a little while. I will entertain a motion regarding paving.
All right, I'll do it. Move to approve the contract with the Sunshine Paving Corporation for the FY21 townwide paving project in the amount of 253,284.96 as presented, authorizing use of digital signature if approved.
A second?
Second.
Thank you, David. All right. Hi, Justin.
Hello.
Long time no see.
So this is a motion to approve the contract for Sunshine Paving, who was the low bidder in our spring paving invitation for bid regarding the paving plan for 2021, which includes Brook Street, all of Brook Street, actually, the cul-de-sac at Durant, and a portion of Nason Street that was damaged due to the water main break over a year ago. So we put together this memo package, both myself and Wayne Amico, to kind of highlight some of the bigger issues as well as just the adoption of, of the Sunrise, I'm sorry, Sunshine Paving contract. Just to bring to light that we're utilizing Chapter 90 funding. We do not have any articles or capital money set aside for road maintenance or sidewalk reconstruction, as all of that was spent on Great Roads Project. And we have not received allocation of funds for, for any paving since that project was completed. So all we have to conduct paving projects at this point is our Chapter 90, which is a yearly allocation. But Chapter 90 can be piggybacked and transferred. So if we don't use it, we don't lose it. It's within a 10-year window. So you can, so some towns will utilize their Chapter 90 every year, such as what we kind of do here in Maynard. Others will kind of wait and utilize it in three-year cycles where they can get a little more within their three years, or if they have specific projects in sight and they know what the estimated cost is that can fall under a Chapter 90 allocation, they'll save up for that and then procure that. An example of a project like that would be traffic control devices, traffic lights at Hayes, Concord, and Athan Street. That's a project that could be funded through Chapter 90. It's more than our yearly allocation. So if we wanted to do something like that, you could save it. So I know that we did not conduct paving in the fall of last year. And the reason that we pushed it off to the spring is when I came on in September, we conducted a fall paving after speaking with my staff in Wayne Amico regarding fall paving, which is not a conducive time of year to conduct road paving. I asked why they were doing it in the fall, and part of the issue was that they just repeatedly fell into it based off of funding, et cetera. And that nobody ever tried to skip the fall and push it to spring, so. That's David. David, thank you. So, um, so what I did was I wanted to restart the cycle. Fall paving should be a last resort, but prime paving season is late spring, early summer, which is this contract, which allows us to get asphalt mix at an advantageous time where the mix is actually done perfect. It's hot, it goes down great, and contractors are willing to get rolling immediately after the winter as they want to start making the money. This is a good time to bid that kind of work. And we actually had this process bid out once, and we, we went through the bidding process later to find that every single one of our bidders did not meet the Mass DOT minimum pre-qualification, which is required utilizing Chapter 90 funds. So we had to conduct the second bid process after Mass DOT and all those contractors finalized and fixed, fixed whatever they had to do with Mass DOT. The second bid process actually came back more advantageous for the town of Maynard, as it drove the cost down a little more. Sometimes that happens in procurement. I think I, I mentioned to the board when we were originally going to procure this a while back, that we were trying to look at this as a bigger picture, which helps drive down costs to try to get something within our, within our allocation of Chapter 90 funds. So we are looking to conduct our primary goal, which was all of Brook Street park, portion of Durant, which tends to be the cul-de-sac and Nason Street. Utilizing that bid process is 253,284.96. I don't want to go higher than that, and I don't want to rebid out, not because I don't think that we can get more work done without the allocation of funds from an article or reserve funds or something in that manner. If we have change orders on these projects or run into issues, we need a little buffer within our Chapter 90 to pay for that. So I'm requesting that we just move forward with this, with this contract at the price of, of 253. Yes, 253.84. And that will allow us some leeway in case we have any issues. And then whatever we have left over next year will account for in our, our paving recommendations. I did ask Beta to include an updated pavement management map and plan, and that, which is on page four. I do want to stress to the board that without prioritizing funding for roads and sidewalks, which I know is hard, because I'm wrapped into every one of the capital conversations we have across the community. But we are failing and not keeping up with our pavement management plan, which is driving up the short-term costs. So I believe Wayne Amico has mentioned this to the board in the past, but there is some new board members, Jeff being one of them, that might not understand the mind, the major details regarding pavement management. If we conduct Millen overlay projects, which is a machine that grinds up the top coat and repaves it, that is the, the cheapest and most minimally invasive approach to. That is the, the cheapest and most minimally invasive approach to pavement management. When we have to perform reclamation projects is when we take the same machine, take the top coat off and then take the binder, which is the subcoat off. And get down to gravel and then we have to regrade the road and provide that entire process in the opposite direction. Performing a binder and a top coat, it is one of the most expensive processes to pavement management. Unfortunately, we are falling drastically into reclamation projects. If you see those red indication streets, those are all reclaimed projects. Even some of our orange are reclaimed projects. The projects that we have in front of us for a motion to accept, all of Brook Street, Durant Street are all reclaimed projects. The only reason Nathan is a million overlay is because it was just paved and unfortunately the water. Break caused some waves and some, some erosion underneath the, the road pack, which is why it needs to be addressed. We would like to start to see an allocation of funds, maybe a dedication, not necessarily a set price, but maybe a policy. Wrapped around a percentage of free cash that might help us allow us to do. Something very similar to what I was explaining with chapter ninety funds. Maybe it's not yearly that that money is used, but as that money builds, we can kind of accumulate a bigger plan. Maybe every three years include three or four more streets into our chapter ninety plan. But I think that's a bigger conversation, but I just want to add that we are falling far behind. Even this motion to accept Durant, Brook Street were slated to be repaved last year. So we're actually a year plus behind at this point.
Actually, quick question for you, Justin, regarding, regarding the pavement plan. Is there a sidewalk plan of the same type of evaluation? I mean, I realize that we have sidewalks that are in disrepair, so I'm just curious if that's been done or not.
So we have a sidewalk plan for ADA conformance that was executed by Beta. But that kind of deals with compliance issues, which for us is easier. Instead of going through the same what you see here on this map, if it's out of ADA compliance, then we put it on a priority list anyways. And then we look at that as a whole, not just from ADA ramps. But if you have tripping hazards, that takes, you know, depending on how many lineal feet, we'll just say like Walt Ham Street. Walt Ham Street is in some tough shape sidewalk-wise. Also. Oh goodness, I can't think of the name of the road, not Concord Street. It will come to me when I'm not thinking about it. We have a couple of major sidewalk issues in town from a number of areas. And those are prioritized, but they're kind of on our ADA reconstruction list. So something a little different than this.
Justin, we, we've had the milling conversation. Question, I think we, we started off with that about six months ago. What, I'll ask you the same question I did then. What would the cost be to maintain the current level of, of streets in town?
So I put in, our capital request was for three quarters of a million dollars this year for roadway. And I believe it was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for sidewalks. As we continue to just float on chapter ninety, that seven fifty will start to increase to a million. And the same with the sidewalks. So right now to play catch up with what our pavement management plan is, we would need three quarters of a million dollars. For roadway pavement and we would need roughly two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for sidewalk pavement. Now again, that's not a blanket fix everything and put them to blue. That's really to catch us back up to where our original pavement plan was.
Thank you.
A quick question, Justin. I, I think I answered my own question as I studied the map, but I was trying to figure out the numbering. And I'm assuming that once you hit like eighty or seventy-five or something, it moves to the next color down. And so that those colors, those numbers are corresponding with the, the percentage, how good a grade they get.
Correct. Yeah, and there's, there's a large number of variables within that, David. Use. Location, primary routes, secondary routes, et cetera. But yeah, these are the pay, what's called paving index numbers and they're done by a calculation performed by a computer system that was designed by. I don't know, it, it's proprietary, but a number of large civil engineering companies now have these pavement system management. Index mapping systems and. Again, we've, we've had some luck with Beta in regards to this. But what's happening now is, is we're kind of back to, we're well off the plan. And we're focusing on the immediate and being reactionary at this point. And unfortunately, what's going to happen this way is if we continue down this path. We're only going to be able to address the primary roads as the secondary roads fall deeper and deeper into distress. Just for the sheer, sheer fact of liability. We are more liable for some of our main runs with the amount of traffic we have on it. Than we are for our neighborhoods based off of sheer speed and the potential damage that it could cause. So I just, I would like to see us come up with the long-term plan here, but it all starts with allocation. If we, if we start to allocate funding, then we could talk and discuss about. Prioritizing our pavement management where we focus on one or two primary roads and a secondary road. Where we're still allowing some of the neighborhoods to get. Repaved in a manner that, you know, could provide some, some tangible results for people that actually look out their windows.
All right, anybody else have any questions, comments? During this? All right. Then all those in favor of the approval, Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. So thank you, Justin. All right. Next is draft articles for the town meeting. Greg, quick question. Should we do all of the motions together? Or? Have one person read all of the motions and then second it all as one group?
I don't know, it's kind of up to you. If you, if you think there might be an article that requires longer discussion, maybe you want to take that one out. But it's, it's up to you. You can, you can do one at a time and vote on each. Or you can, or one person can read them all and then you just vote to, to, you know, accept all of them as, as moved. That's probably the most efficient way.
Okay.
Okay, sorry for not being clear. So how about, okay, here's my advice. Have someone, have someone read them all, someone second them all and then, and then you open to discussion. And then if, and if one of them says they don't want to approve motion blah, 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 then, then sound that one aside and you can, you can approve all. With the exception of article.
Got it. Okay, sounds good. Thank you. All right, so who would like to make the very large motion?
I'm willing to read them, but can I just do the motion for one and then just go motion to accept and then just. Do you have to say motion to accept for each? You can just go down and read the control number.
Well, I think there's a subtle difference because. Some of them are motion to accept and some of them are accepted and approved.
All right, so I'll, I'll read the full of each one.
Okay.
And second them all at once?
Yeah, someone can vote, second all the ones that you're doing.
All right, so I'll read them then. Motion to accept draft control B B. Amend bylaw, chapter twenty-one, nuisances as shown. Move article forward to finance committee for review and comments. Motion to accept draft control C C. Amend bylaw, chapter thirty-eight. Marijuana penalty as shown, move article forward to finance committee for review and comments. Motion to accept draft control D D. Amend bylaw, chapter eighteen. Handicap parking as shown, move article forward to finance committee for review and comments. Motion to accept and approve draft control F. Sewer enterprise fund budget fiscal year twenty twenty-two as shown. Move forward to finance committee for review and comments. Motion to accept and approve draft control G. Water enterprise fund budget fiscal year twenty twenty-two as shown. Move forward to finance committee for review and comments. Motion to accept and approve draft control J. Sewer retain earnings as shown, move forward to finance committee for review and comments. Motion to approve. Motion to accept and approve draft control V. Well for treatment plant number four facility and process upgrade. One million as shown, move forward to finance committee for review and comments. And motion to accept and approve draft control W. Contract, main and municipal golf course as shown, move forward to finance committee for review and comments.
Do I have a second? All right, okay, second, thank you. All right, Greg, you want to give us an overview?
Well, it's kind of a little over a place. I do have Bill Coleman here that can go over. You know, those, those items that come from the bylaw, you'd like to hear first, but the other items. Sorry, David, yeah. So the other items may not be too surprising. We have sewer and water enterprise, so those are, those are a reflection of the rates. Same with the sewer enter, retained, the well for treatment. And then the, the golf course, which we, you know, the, the length of the contract, the golf course that we talked about. A past meeting. Right, so maybe if you want, if you have any questions about any of those, of course, we'll answer them, but Bill Coleman is here, so if you have questions about those.
I have a general comment, I think more so than a question, and Bill. I see you're online, so. Yeah, you can, you can comment. One of the frustrating parts of the last town meeting was, you know, for example, I believe the nuisances was on. The, and the, the residents, when they were out. Making their comments were commenting on things that were established by law, not something that we were trying to change.
Dave, I agree with you and let me just, I'll, I'll cut to the chase if it's okay with you.
Yeah.
I have submitted a, well, the problem is we're also reorganizing those nuisances to a different. You know, putting them in a different order. So what I did was I took. That reordering and then created a red line. Copy that to be used as a handout, so people will be able to look at it. And basically see what actually is being changed, what's being added, what's being deleted. I did send that in with the. Other warrant articles. When I, when I sent it in the other, the other week and. Greg should have a copy of that. If he can share that with you, you can look it over and see with that, or I can, I can send you, send another copy.
Yeah, I didn't see it in our packet and, but I wanted to make sure that when we went to town meeting that the. That when we presented it in the, in the warrant, I, I don't know which way is, is the safest way to go.
I just can't, can't really do it in, in the warrant because we're also reorganizing. If you recall at the last town meeting, the storm water warrant. Had essentially a red line copy as what they were changing in it. Since we're also rearranging things in there, it would get very confusing trying to figure out what's, what's being changed, what's not with it. So we kind of reorganized it and then created a red line copy to be a handout. So people can look at it and compare with what's in the warrant to what's in the handout.
Okay, all right, I'll, I'll, I'll trust that you guys will do the right thing and, and have it set. Because I don't think we need another repeat of people talking about people holding on to handlebars and everything else on. On their bicycles and things like that, you know, when it was totally irrelevant to what we were trying to do in the article.
I agree. And the one of the things I noted that I believe. We had a question from Jeff earlier about meeting with people who raised objections to. A lot of the bicycle aspects of it and I sent an email this evening to Greg, basically. I'd emailed back and forth with Glenn Koenig. I emailed with essentially like a rebuttal to Donna Dotson, who I believe presented a statement at a selectman meeting in October. Also Kirk, and I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing his last name right. Nusada, who is the individual who raised the issue with the, the bicycle handlebars. Being up above and, you know, made some other comments about that nuisance bylaws are, you know. Kind of racist and discriminatory to begin with at the town meeting. Basically, all of our bicycle related bylaws come directly from Mass General Law. Have a copy of it in front of me here. Chapter eighty-five, section eleven B. In fact, word for word. Get the one here. Subsection ten said, no bicycle shall be operated away with the handlebars so raised that the. Operator's hands are above the shoulders while gripping them. Any alteration to extend afforded bicycle. From the original design and construction of the bicycle manufacturer is prohibited. That's virtually word for word what we have in the bylaw. And it's coming from, from Mass General Law, so I'll have that, you know, at town meeting as well.
Are any of the changes to the bicycle bylaw here in front of us more restrictive than the initial?
They're basically all the same. The only difference that we did note, we did have the fine. That the state has in the master law incorrect. I believe we had fifty dollars for a fine and it should be twenty. And I'm not sure if I missed that or if it's just my dyslexia kicked in and I reversed the number. Two to a five when we were writing this up to begin with, but that was the one thing that we did correct with that. If we go through and I'll move outside of bicycles with some discussion with, with Chief Noble. We are allowing skateboarding to be done on sidewalks outside of the downtown business district. So it's sort of the same restriction. Don't ride bicycles in the downtown area. Don't ride skateboards on the sidewalk on that. I did some research and found that the state of Massachusetts views skateboarders as pedestrians. So they shouldn't be riding in the street except, you know, using a crosswalk is the only real legal way for, for them to be in the street. So they should then be on sidewalks and do it, but they also have to sort of obey the same rules that when bicycles ride. To alert people that their head and passing and yield the right of way to other pedestrians. Any further questions?
A, a quick question about that, now that, now that you've said that, Bill, sorry. So section nine regarding that where, where it indicates about the, the skateboard in the downtown. So it says that as designated by the Board of Selectmen each year through public notice and then the hazard rail trail. So you're allowing, so we do allow it on the, the rail trail?
Yeah, that, that's coming from, I contacted the, the, I'm not sure if he's president or chair of the Rail Trail Association. For the Assavet River Trail. And basically said is that, yeah, that, that the state requires, allows the skateboards on that. What I did find out from them that I guess this past summer. They're allowing, what is it, class two electric bicycles on rail trails. So we included that as well with it. The, the area about the selectmen designating, that is when we had a skateboard park. But since that had been taken, you know, fell into disrepair and taken down. It probably is not on your, you know, annual agenda to approve any area because it really doesn't exist, you know, one doesn't really exist.
Okay, that was going to be my, that was my question is whether or not, because that doesn't sound familiar to anything that we've done recently, so I just wanted to make sure that. Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, we're keeping it in there just in case, you know, something does, you know, something is created that can be used. You have it already ready to go.
Excellent. Anyone else have any questions on this or any of the other bylaw? Warrant articles?
Thanks, Bill, for your hard work with this. I know it's not a, it's not an easy task to go through bylaws and. And amend them and, and get approval and agreement and everything else, so. Thank you again.
Oh, thank, thank you.
I, I did have a quick question, Bill, about the, about the marijuana penalty. So I, I'm reading the comments and it basically says that. You know, so if, if the minor police enforces that the fines go to the state, but if we have the bylaw in place. The fines would stay in town?
That is what I was told by Chief Noble. He attended our meeting, oh, you know, pre-COVID. I think it was November over a year ago. And he mentioned that, you know, would we consider this? And I'm sort of saying, well, why isn't, you know, isn't covered by state law? And that's what he told us and we realized, you know, just like, oh. And that's what he told us and we realized, you know, just like, oh, that's a no brainer. You know, if, if, you know, granted, I don't think it would be raised a lot of money, but obviously the law should be enforced. And if it, if it is, you know, we should benefit from it.
I don't think the chief's on anymore. I think he is.
Was, yeah.
No worries. Anyone else have any other questions regarding any of the bylaw warrant articles? Okay, does anyone have any questions regarding any of the remaining? Articles? Questions, comments? Pretty much. So regarding Greg, regarding the golf course, you're gonna, are we keeping the same draft comments or for the?
No, I'll update those. I'm seeing the, you don't like the ones from two thousand fourteen? No, I.
Still pretty relevant, but I just keep making sure that that was going to be updated before.
Actually, those might be the ones I wrote. Becky, are the ones, I, they look actually familiar. So maybe, maybe I did write those. But if you, if you don't like them, I, I can, I can change them.
No, I was just double checking just to see if it's, if they had been updated.
Yeah, no, I, I think those are actually, I think that is what I wrote. Not in two thousand fourteen.
You didn't write them in two thousand fourteen? I don't understand. Alright, anyone else, anything? Alright, so nothing of concern, so we'll move all of them forward. And all. In favor of moving all of these forward. Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I M E S. Thank you. Alright, next. FY twenty-two budget development. Maybe we should start talking about the budget. What do you think?
Start or stop?
That was good.
No, okay, Greg, what do you have for us?
Well, so this won't be of any surprise, I don't think, at least the first part. So. We did get the House one budget from the governor's office and that did have the tuition charter tuition reimbursement. Cliff, if you will, about how much revenue we were going to be getting from charter school tuition. And then, so we needed to solve for that. So my recommendation is to tax up to the levy limit, which we did not do based on the, on the. Get a great amount of new growth for this fiscal year. So the Board of Selectmen set the tax rates with. Without taxing up to the full levy limit, but if we were to tax up to the full levy limit. That would equate, it's approximately hundred and eighty thousand dollars or more. Of, of revenue that was not originally budgeted for in my town minister recommended budget of the Board of Selectmen. Pair that with the use of ESRS two, which is an acronym, but it's the care, it's the education variant of care stimulus money. If, so we were asked by Assavet Regional Vocational School if they, if, if we would like to consider that they use the ESRS money to offset. The assessment to the town for Assavet and we said yes. So that, that solves for about the, you know, that solves the two hundred thirty thousand dollar deficit, if you will, from. The governor's house one budget for the lack of revenue that we didn't have. So that solves for that. So it kind of sets us back to where we were. From the January twenty-first budget. I also wanted to point out, so, so my, my recommendation now, my recommendation to the Board of Selectmen is to. Is to accept those changes. So to tax up to the levy limit and, and to accept the use of the Assavet. Or instead of use of ESRS two for the Assavet assessment, which will bring us back to the. About level where we were back in January.
So the question I have about taxing up to the levy limit, I'm, I'm trying to wrap my brain around. I, I realize that we didn't use. We, we didn't tax up to the levy limit for when we set the taxes for technically FY twenty-one. That funded the FY twenty-one budget, correct? That's what I'm trying to, I'm trying to. So what you're proposing is to take the money that we didn't use. And which would have been almost like a cushion type of thing. Kind of. To take that money that we didn't use and factor that in when we set the. Tax rates this coming November.
Yes, yeah, because then you have a new starting point. So if you were to say, we do want a levy limit. And then that, then that goes up to the top of your next column, which you'll see in, in the revision. This starts your new column and then you go down from there.
Yeah, okay, alright. Alright, anyone have any questions? About this?
So I have a second thing to add, manager, if you.
Help yourself.
Okay, so. I also just got our Maya Health renewal. So I, I hadn't even gotten to you to that, to the board on Friday. So if you refresh your board docs. But I'll just give you the bottom line, which is a very good health renewal. Two point three percent premium increase. So we start every budget cycle within, I think it's a nine percent budget increase. Over the year before because it's health insurance and that's usually how things go. So. But then we kind of come down as, as the months progress in our budget development. So as of about December, when I got a call from Maya Health, they said go to about mid-ten, so that's about five percent. So that's what we did. We brought down to five percent and that's was my budget recommendation to the Board of Selectmen on January twenty-first. So this is two point three, which is, which is good. I'll be forthright and say that, 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 that money i- is good money. That's a hundred and seven thousand dollars that we would not have to be paying. You know, that difference between five, five percent and two point three percent is, is a hundred and seven thousand dollars. And that's good. Last year, though, the, the Board of Selectmen accepted my recommendation not to set the budget according to the, the rate renewal. So if I recall. We budgeted in the, in the. That's the, I'm gonna mute you. Okay, so we budgeted a four percent. But we knew our new renewal rate was, and don't quote me on this, but I think it was about three and a half percent. So that they gave us a certain amount of offset, which is, which is a good thing because you never really know how, how health insurance or what claims you're going to get throughout the course of the year. And also it's good to, to not go fully down so that you can be prepared for the budget the next year. Cause you didn't have to make up for that, like we're gonna start back up at nine percent for the following year. Our, our health insurance advisors, which is NFP, so that's a different firm. But as well as Maya have both said that a lot of people just weren't going to the doctors during COVID. So when they, whenever society reopens and people start feeling comfortable going back to the doctor's office, claims will go up. So it, like that. I, I haven't sent my recommendation, what I'm gonna do with the board. I'm just sort of telling you that, yes, I did get this renewal sheet. It looks great. I hope to sign it. But I, I also want to say that, that. It's, things will not probably be so rosy like come, come next year. And I, I think, I think the town should prepare ourselves for that. And so. Right, so I haven't, I don't have a recommendation for the board yet, but you can hear where, where my head's at.
But you're kind of considering, you know, if we had to think off the top, that you wouldn't go down to the two point three percent number. You'd maybe do three. Three point three.
I need to look at what, maybe, so the, the, maybe. A hundred and seven thousand dollars is not that much either. And I'm not, I mean, I'll say it's not nothing, but like it, in regards to like some of our bigger budget issues that we have. We would only go so far. So I, I would, I haven't, I haven't decided what my final recommendation is going to be, but.
Anything else?
Nope, not about the budget.
Excellent. Anyone have any questions, comments? Regarding any of that? Okay. Alright. Next, we're going to talk about, I, I actually really want to thank Becky and Greg for keeping us on task. With the check-in of the Board of Selectmen goals because we did what we, you know, we did talk about it. I know. A couple of you have reached out to me as well that, you know, okay, we had it done. So now let's check in and make sure, see where we are. In relation to those. So, so thank you. Everybody for, for keeping us on task. Greg, do you want to speak to this at all?
I mean, I can. So the, so just for context, the board, we met in. I put it at the bottom there. Actually, we first started in September twelfth, I see. So, and then, and then a couple of.
Okay.
Meetings after that, too. So the, the board, as, as you do every year, you, you have a meeting amongst yourselves. It's a public meeting. It's publicly posted. But it is a special select meeting set outside, at least initially, you, you do this outside of the regular selectman meetings. And so there was. It's pretty standard. And so there's seven, I saw I had found in the last couple of. You know, evolutions I've been involved with, it's about five to seven is about the amount of goals you do. And I think you, I think you do a great job of, of. Trying to capture. The, you know, like the, the, the vision of the town and then it's how you might want to progress the town. But this year is particularly difficult as you, as we all know, just because of COVID and the restrictions of COVID and so many uncertainties that there are. But it looks like a lot of the same goals are still there from September, in my opinion. And then what I did after that is I, I tried to provide some strategies to execute those goals underneath. So really what the board had was the, like, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and then underneath that was. I think in collaboration with the board, but it was, it was sort of my, my, my recommendations and how to, how to do some of this.
Move this forward. Okay. Um, does anyone have any comments regarding the goals? Anything we should, you feel that we should be looking? Looking closer at? Anything you've done a great job with?
I just, can I just make a few points? When you, we're talking about the collaboration between the school committee and, and. Board of Selectmen, I think that's really crucial, especially when you put down the two last strategies there. About considering methods to promote both the town and the school district. I think that's something that we need to start working on somehow. How do we get the word out that we're doing, whatever, whatever we do and that should be promoted, that, that people should know about? How do we do that so that we could get the word out? And then the last one is a, making sure that the master plan. It is utilized by the school committee and us in collaboration to achieving the, that goal. So that's one thing. And then the, and the second piece, the establishing a reporting procedure. I mean, it's fantastic that we put that in there, but how do we? How, how we, are we checking that? How do we monitoring that? You know, you know, because you, you put the strategy in there. So how do we monitor, making sure that the older stakeholders are progressing towards the, the actual goal of the master plan?
I thought the concept was to have. Boards start to come before the select board one at a time. So maybe do one a meeting over a period of months. So I think the, the way to do that is first of all, set. Make sure we set the expectation correct with the committee. So it's not, not that we're doing anything wrong. This is just a check in that we, we feel is healthy and want to do and have as part of a conversation. And then we gotta start putting them into the schedule.
Yeah. So we have, again, we have, we have not done that, that much yet. That the, so the recreation committee came before us and they were kind of trying to figure out their place and. Their place within the master plan and, and I thought that that was a good tie in to get them in before us. But you are right, we haven't had a lot of other committees yet coming in.
Well, the Susquehanna Committee just presented today.
Bonus.
Yeah, that's a, no, but I just, to your point, Jeff, I think that was what my question to is how do we establish that? How do we get that set up so that we could do, we, who, we do have those check-ins, you know? So that we do have some reporting on ongoing basis.
So the question I guess I would have regarding that, which, so what? Do the board members feel are the. The priority committees or boards to invite?
Context, that's a great question. I also want to get some context that the master plan implementation committee or whatever it's going to be called. They're trying to schedule their first meeting. In fact, I think I just accepted an invite to, for their first meeting. So, so this is good, but, but I talking with Jason Creel. The idea deal was have their do their first meeting. They'll, then they'll reach out to the various sports committees, but this would be great feedback so that I could tell them. That, 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 here's your parties.
So, so that would be helpful with, with, if we kind of put this part on pause a little bit for right now. Let the master plan. Further committee. Come by. And basically, I personally, and you know, if I'm wrong, but I personally see. That the ma- that committee could come to us or the other committees could come to us and how, and could show how the board could support them. In helping achieve. Those goals. Right? So, so I think it's helpful to have the master planning committee, whatever it's going to be called. Hear from these boards first. And then cohesively, they can come to us again when they know what, in fact, they're looking for.
Yeah, and I think you, 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 you put that in correct words. We're supporting it. So we, we want to make sure that that's. Our, our role is to support it and, and to hear what, what their plans are, how they're gonna achieve their goals.
Alright.
But I still want to go back to that first piece about finding a method about promoting the town and the school district and how do we collaborate? The, the, the two, the committee and us and getting that word out. Oh, because. We, there's a lot of good things happening in town and, and we need to start getting, getting the word out. And how do we do that? Social media is fine, I think, but there's got to be a different way. The, the town, surrounding towns need to hear. So how do we get the word out?
So I think that I, I hear what you're saying, Armand. I think that right now, I, I do believe that the school committee is coming to speak. In another couple of weeks. But I think that's going to be primarily, that, that will probably be primarily a budget conversation. We might be able to have time for a little bit of other brainstorming type things. But I did have a conversation with Lydia and Brian and Greg a couple of weeks ago. And we did kind of talk similar to what you're saying is. Again, the board has a support role. So do we have any ideas of other ways that we can collaborate together? You know, how can we use W? How can we promote WAVM? Or how can we together? Do something. And I think that's originally what Chris had gotten to a, a few months ago, talking about. Trying to have a meeting where the budget isn't actually always in the mix. I mean, it's hard, especially during budget season. That that's going to be in the mix. But there are plenty of really great things that go on with our schools and it does get lost in that general angst and conversation about budget. So, so I would be hopeful that, you know, we could figure out some time in the calendar to have the school committee. You know, promote what is really great about Maynard schools. Because I, I agree, we don't hear that enough. I mean, I'm, we have, there are parents who are, who, who have kids in the system. So, so we know. But we need others to know too. So I agree.
Yeah, you're making a good point. Let's put the budget behind us and then maybe we could have a clear conversation when the budget's behind us. And we don't, that doesn't cloud up our discussions.
Anyone else have? Go ahead, David.
No, my comment to Armand was the budget's never behind us because as soon as we're done, as soon as we're done. Yeah, I mean, as soon as town meeting's over, we're basically starting, Greg can tell you, he starts working on next year's budget, so.
Well, maybe we could, maybe you could open up a little window for the, for a little conversation.
If we're talking about the, the, the boards and the, you know, the groups that we. We should be supporting and promoting and appointing. Why wouldn't we just put one on, one, you know, add one to the agenda every, every meeting for a fifteen minute presentation or discussion? You know, what, what are they up to? What, what can we do to support them better? What? What, all that stuff. But that's, I mean, how many?
I like that.
I mean, Becky, how many committees and boards do we have? It'd be a lot. I mean, you know, you're talking about X number of meetings. It would be, you know, you're only talking about thirty meetings over the course of the year. Get them all in.
And, and frankly, I just, you know, I know that that's Greg's committee, but the Economic Development Committee should be also coming to us and. And, you know, every once in a while, I know that Greg submitted the annual report for this past year, but I think it's important that they also come to us too as one of the committees. Because they don't, they don't join.
A couple of times last year.
Yeah, but that was for different reasons. Yeah, but that was for different purposes.
Yeah, well.
Well, cause and that's, that's again, because that's a town administrator.
Yes, yeah.
Committee as opposed to the, uh, the board of selectmen committees also. So, um, I'm not saying that the economic development committee is not important. Obviously it is. You know, because they, they do advise on a lot. Um, anyone else have?
I, I like Chris's, um, idea, if we could, and Jeff mentioned that earlier too.
Okay.
Yeah.
I will, I will, I will work with Becky. And, and actually that, um, I forgot that we also had, um, we did also have the board of health then. Because we did, you know, we had their conversations as well. And, um, you know, so we have been meeting with committees. We've actually done a lot of business in the past few months, I think.
Yeah.
You know.
I'm, I'm let, like the board of health during a pandemic is going to come to the meeting every once in a while. But then after the pandemic is over, there may be, but I, I just, I think to catch some of the committees that wouldn't necessarily become, coming in front of us every year, just to check in, um, and make sure everybody is aligned and then we're, we're moving forward the way that everybody wants. Uh, and if not, how do we fix it? So.
We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna see the school committee no matter what. You know what I mean? We're gonna, because it, it, we, we should, I mean, we should, you know, based on the size of the, the budget and the importance of it and everything. So we're gonna, I never really thought much about like scheduling them, because I knew sooner or later, we were going to need to sit and talk. But, yeah, definitely some of the smaller committees. You know, you hear from people only when they leave a committee or something, oh, they were struggling and this and that. But wouldn't we be honest to know before they, somebody left, uh, the committee floundered, you know? But.
Okay. I will, uh, I will work on that with Greg.
Madam Chair, I also want to add, it's probably goes without saying that like the, these, there's no time limit to these goals. I mean, like, yeah, we, we try to show progress by the end of the year, fiscal year, but like the, you know, establish a reporting procedure. You're, that is happening. So you, you're establishing that and then you'll, and then we'll get to all whatever 30 committees. There's not 30. We'll, we'll get to them all or as, as time progresses. But I, for what it's worth, I think you guys have made a lot of progress on this. And, uh, usually Megan Zamudo does a good job of telling me like word for word, how, how you guys have made such progress and we'll get to that.
Can't wait for her to come back, huh?
But seriously, how much longer is she gone?
Oh, two weeks. Who's counting?
Whoa.
All right. Uh, anyone else have any other comments regarding any of the goals, anything that they, that they feel also that we should be looking at? This check in? Okay. All right. Um, great. So I will, you know, so, you know, keep everything in mind and, uh, and we'll work with scheduling accordingly as we can. So we'll go from there. All right. Uh, next is going to be a motion regarding the finance staff. So I will entertain a motion for 13A.
I will move to, uh, regretfully rescind the appointment of Gregory Johnson, town administrator as from the position of temporary treasurer collector effective immediately.
Do we have a second? Let's see, if we don't second it, then we can't do it.
Oh, okay.
You don't want me.
Yeah, yeah. That's why they call him Mr. Moneybags.
No, the buck stops there. That's.
Oh, the buck stops there. Okay.
All right. Uh, so Greg, you want to, uh?
So fortunately we have a treasure collector. So, uh, so Jen Welch, who I, I will, I will arrange to, so that y'all can meet, um, Jen. Uh, she was on the phone. You didn't see her face, but she was on the phone for, for the joint budget review on Saturday. So with her being there, you don't need me signing, you don't need me signing stuff anymore. So, uh, so that is a town administrator appointment. So that's why you, she's not on your docket. But, um, but yeah, so we're moving on.
All right. Um, and she's adjusting. She's only, she's been here, what, just about a couple of weekends?
Her, this is her third week. Is it their week?
Every week, okay.
Yeah. So we're still transitioning, which goes back to, this is going to be 13B. We're, we're, we're still have, um, Eric Kinserf's, uh, public accounting firm. It's like helping the consultant for that transition period. And so, um, but it's going well. I mean, the office was in good hands. So the, it's, you know, Cheryl was retiring, but things were, were pretty well in place. And there was a couple of things that, that would needed to be, um, addressed, not addressed, but sort of like got caught up with. But for the most part, the, the office was well in, in order and whatnot. And then, um, so Jen, Jen will get her feet on her pretty quick. They have a lot of confidence in her. Yeah.
All right. Uh, any questions for Greg before we remove him as the treasurer collector?
Thanks for doing a good job.
There you are.
All right.
Everyone's still paying their taxes. So there.
There you go.
That's a good thing. Um, all in favor, uh, David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Armin?
Yes.
I am a yes. And then we'll move into 13B. And again, this is another motion. That I will entertain.
I'll move to appoint Eric Kinserf as interim town accountant as of March 1st, 2021, for an indefinite term and authorize the use of digital signatures if approved.
Do I have a second?
Sure.
Thank you, Chris. All right, Greg.
So this is a similar process that we just, that we just rescinded. You just rescinded for, for my position as a temporary, uh, treasure collector. So again, this is Eric Kinserf's firm and Eric actually was used by the town seven or eight years ago, um, when we were transitioning to Mike Guzzo, Cheryl Kane, and, um, so anyways, he's a reputable, responsible vendor, if you will. And, um, and I'm recommending that we use him as firm again. Mike Guzzo's retirement date is, uh, February 26th. That's next Friday. He's only coming in a couple of days a week now, but when, but that's, that's it. Like that was the understanding is the 26th, which is a Friday. He's all set. And then starting on Monday, we'll have a, a, the same sort of approach that we're having with Eric's firm in the treasure collector's office where he's mostly on call. So, um, but you know, maybe once or twice a week, he would come in or one of his, uh, partners would come in to help, but he himself would, would fulfill any of the, the sort of like weighty tasks needed by, uh, the interim town accountant. Uh, one big difference between the town accountant and the treasure collectors, the treasure collector has assigned a lot of, like, there's a lot more signature authority that's necessary for the treasure collector as opposed to the town accountant. So, um, that's why I'm not recommending to, to be appointed. We can have, you can have Eric be appointed. And this is, this is, it's indefinite, but I'm not expecting it to be so, so long. I don't want to get too much into the weeds about where we are with hiring process, but we're, 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 we should be finalizing the hiring process for a new town accountant in the next couple of weeks.
Okay. Can I ask you a quick question? The title town accountant, is that something that we have to use or is that what? Cause it just sounds so old fashioned, you know? It sounds like, uh, you know, like someone with a pocket, you know, protector walking around the town hall as opposed to having a finance director. I don't understand.
So town accountant is a town charter. Sounds old fashioned if you're not in New England, Armin. No, the town accountant is in the charter, not to say that, you know, um, and then the finance director is, is also a term, but it can be either the town accountant or the treasure collector. Um, so first you got to hire those positions and then you figure out who you want to have.
Got you.
Um, the town accountant is one, it, it's just the, it's the tradition, but it is, but it is the term that's used across the Commonwealth. So, so.
That's right. That's why I asked, cause I, you know, I just, I, I, cause we have to kind of be a little forward thinking about that position. Uh, so we want to make sure that it's not just someone that's going to give you the numbers and be a historian. You want to, someone that's going to be, give you some forecasting, you know?
Yes, that, that was, that was, um, a lot of the lines of questioning during our hiring process was, was on that.
Perfect.
And so, and my quick question is just that, um, so you said that Eric Kinserf or his firm will come in to help with the accounting, the, the accountant's office. But where we're appointing him, if there's anything that has to be done.
That's him.
By an accountant, he would be doing that part.
Yes, you are appointing him.
Anyone have any other questions? All right. All in favor, uh, Jeff?
Yes.
Armin?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Um, all right. Next we will move on and this is, um, so this is my first year presenting a, um, a town administrator evaluation. And, um, it actually has changed since, uh, Chris did it last year, um, in a way that, uh, so due to updating open meeting laws. It used to be that the chair would get all of the feedback and would put it into a document and, um, and distribute that document. Because of, uh, some rulings regarding open meeting law, um, the, the one bought, the one person can't know what the rest of the, uh, board members are thinking. Uh, so it actually has to be prepared by someone who's independent of us. So this year it was our town council um, that prepared all the documents. They took everything that we said and put it into, um, into this document. So, um, what I ended up doing was I, I asked for it to be an executive for right now, because it is a public document. But I just felt that it would probably be better, um, executive until we talked to Greg. And then once we talked to Greg, obviously we, we can move it to the public domain. But I was wondering if anybody has any comments, questions or that.
Just this again, in executive session?
Yeah, I was just going to ask that.
Just in executive session? I don't think we can. It's a.
Performance, performance management, I believe is, is, uh.
Public, yeah.
Yeah.
It's not a contract year, is it?
Yes, it is.
That's, that's executive, no.
But this, but this is, this evaluation is.
Yeah.
Last year.
Seven months ago. Yeah.
But so if we, if we're listed as executive, I don't think we can discuss it, can we?
The, the document itself wasn't shared publicly until this meeting. So presumably I could, if you want, Madam Chair, I can move it from the executive content into the public content right now.
If that's okay with you, that's, that's fine with me.
With me, me, me personally?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yes, it's it. I took the job knowing, uh, you can't, this is, this is it. This is part of the gig. You just, every, yeah, the whole world knows how you do.
Absolutely. That's fine. So.
So from my, I, I, I wasn't able to see the actual reports. So maybe I have to refresh my board docs, I guess, because it's not, it wasn't uploaded on mine. So I gotta look at it.
It's down below. It's in the executive area.
Oh, maybe that's why I can't see it.
Did we forget to give you executive clearance again?
Yeah, you know, right. Uh, we have to have separate keys for that.
Oh, all right.
When you go into board docs too, you have to make sure you go in the right way. So you get the executive.
Maybe that's what I did. Okay. Nevermind.
It's public now.
Okay.
All right. So does anyone have any comments or and actually any comments regarding the evaluation or thoughts about Greg or anything moving forward?
For, my, my first comment would be, um, I hope we can be more timely as we move forward with getting these things out, um, in the future, um, that it's only fair, not only it's mostly, it's unfair to Greg, but beyond that, it's unfair to the community too, because the community wants to know how its town administrator is being, is performing and whatever, but more so, you know, to Greg. I think that even since this, um, since the review was completed from my perspective, obviously I can only speak from my perspective, but, um, I think the last six months, I mean, I think, I, I don't remember when I completed this thing. It's probably three or four months ago already. And I think over the last six months, I'll say, um, I think Greg has, uh, grown even more into this position than he had in the first year and a half, two years, whatever it's been since we brought him on board. I think the challenges that we faced, the, uh, the engagement that he's shown, the, um, the level of uh, experience that he's developing with budgetary issues, which I think was admittedly, and I think he would admit to this, was, was something that he had limited experience with. And he's, he's, um, he's growing into that role. And, um, is sharing ideas and sharing thoughts and sharing, um, you know, new approaches that I think is beneficial to us and to the town as we move forward. So I think that, um, my, from my perspective, the last six months have been, uh, a very strong six months for Greg. And so I, I, I feel very comfortable as we move forward. I'll leave it at that. But you know, I think Greg is, um, is doing a, a very good job at this point. And, um, you know, I think we can expect to see continued growth and continued development, continued, um, you know, part of the issue too, I think is that, um, you know, he's been dealing with a lot of new employees and new hires and, and building his team as we go forward. So I think as that comes into form and as we get on board with our new, the finance team that we just talked about, um, and, and that whole process, I think, uh, I think we'll be in good, in good shape. So, you know, I, I think Greg's had his, his, his learning issues because not, and from a negative perspective, I'm not saying, you know, like from a, you know what I mean? Uh, he's, he's worked his way into the job. He's, he's, uh, he's, he's developing. And, um, so those are my comments. And so Greg, you know, congratulations on especially the last six months where I think you've, uh, risen to the challenge and, uh, have shown a lot of growth and, and, you know, I'm happy with that.
Thanks, Dave.
So, uh, this is what happens. COVID made you do this, I guess, you know, the last six months made you stronger, but, uh, I think I, in general, I kind of echo what, um, uh, David was saying. The one question that I have is when we go through this evaluation, uh, how important is it that, uh, for us to talk to department heads to just get a feel for what is the, you know, atmosphere in, in the town hall? The, you, the, the actual teamwork and collaboration that's happening in town hall. And I know that Greg is doing a fantastic job of putting together a team and, and strong team. I mean, you could see some of the people that he's bringing on, that is going to make him a better leader too. But I'm just wondering whether or not do we, was that a practice that we're allowed to talk to department heads uh, about the atmosphere and the engagement that's taking place in, in town hall? I mean, I, I don't know. I'm just asking that question. When we go through the evaluation process.
Are you, are you, I don't know if you're asking me. It's, I don't know who you're asking.
I don't know. Just in general, I mean, I, I don't know if that's, it's that a practice that, uh, we allowed to do that? Cause I, I didn't do it. So I don't know whether or not as, as the board is allowed to talk to department heads to see how the atmosphere in, in the town hall.
My perspective on that, Armin, is generally we should not be going directly to department heads ourselves without going, without going through Greg. However, I think if you were to say to Greg, and Greg, you can correct me if I'm wrong with this, but I believe that if you were to say to Greg, hey, Greg, I'm going to start working on your performance review. And I'd like to speak to the chief. Is it okay with you if I go and speak to him? I don't think Greg would have a problem with that. But I don't think it's proper for any of us at any time to, without Greg's involvement, um, to go directly to a department head and start talking about things without Greg's knowledge, because that sort of subverts the whole, um, you know, and, and others may disagree, but that's just my thought is, you know, I, I don't feel I have the authority to go to it directly to Justin to start talking to Justin about a particular issue. I will always copy Greg in and say to Greg, hey, here's an issue. Can you let Justin know? And if Greg thinks I can speak directly to Justin, Greg will tell me that. But otherwise, I always, otherwise I always go.
My question was specific to going through the review process.
And on that one, I would say, I would say the same thing. You would ask Greg, you would ask Greg, is it, do you mind if I speak to Justin about, uh, you know, performance issues? How he, how he views teamwork in town hall or whatever, you know?
And I don't disagree with that perspective, but prior to like the last year, we didn't get them last year, but the first time I did this, the, the evaluation came with an instruction sheet. And the instruction sheet suggested that we do exactly what you said we wouldn't do, which, which I agree. If I'm going to go talk to somebody that's a report to Greg, I'm going to say, Greg, I'm going to go talk to, you know, as part of the evaluation process, I'm going to talk to. If I'm going to go talk to somebody that's a report to Greg, I'm going to say, Greg, I'm going to go talk to, you know, as part of the evaluation process, I'm going to talk to. All the department heads, I think that, you know, have some relevance to discuss or, you know, hey, how do you feel things are? How do you think the morale in town hall is, which is the responsibility of the town administrator and stuff like that? That was like, we got an instruction sheet that told us to do that at one point, like this is, this is how it should be done. I think we got away from it over the past few years, but that was originally one of the things that we were asked to do was to actually, you know, go and talk to those folks, but I don't, you know. Think that we've kind of got away from that for a few different reasons.
Who, who, who said or made the change from that form of the evaluation to the one I have before me now?
What?
Who redesigned that? Who made those changes in the evaluation forms?
The, the, the forms have never changed.
So when did you, so I know that we've, I don't feel like I've gotten instructions like that since I've been on the board. So it was. Us being here.
We, you know, it was, and the other thing is, I don't know who, I don't know who provided, I don't know who wrote the instructions. You know, did the instructions come from, well, the instructions, they weren't, it wasn't a, it wasn't a document that came from the town charter. And it wasn't a document that came as part of the bylaws. It was just somebody's take on how it should be done. You know? So.
So it sounds like there's no real set rules about how the process works. So someone created the process and, I mean, how, from best practices, how does other towns do it? I don't know. You know, do, do, you know?
It's difficult in some level to, to make some of the assessments that this evaluation form in front of us.
I mean, to be, just to be honest, you know, I love Greg, obviously, and we just know what Greg does based on what we know. So how is it that could we evaluate someone from, from his position, leadership position?
You go and you do it, but you tell, but, but you, before you speak to Justin, you say, hey, Greg, I'm going to go speak to Justin.
I, I got that. I'm just, I understand that, but I'm, I'm just trying to ask that question. I'm trying to make a point. Because you evaluate someone based on what you think your perception is about what's going on without actually knowing, talking to people about what is really going on. So we just see this from our perspective. We don't know exactly, not in town hall. We don't know what goes on in there. So we're just kind of believing that things are working well and he's doing a great job. And, and he is, but I'm just making a point. I'm trying to make a point going through the process of evaluation. Don't you want to talk to people there that there's an, that affects, you know, the town hall morale to Chris's point? So we need to know, you know, what is going on and how are we supposed to know that from, from, you know, a helicopter view? What's that?
There's nothing that says you can't do that.
I'm just, that's why I'm asking. I don't know if there's a, if there is a procedure. I don't want to step on people's toes and doing things the wrong way. I'm just asking the question, what is the actual process? So actually it sounds like, oh, Steph has a handle.
Hi, Steph. You're muted.
It's, it actually can be done. If, if it's directed to be done and Greg knows it's happening, you can absolutely make that part of the process. That's from Kate Federoff. So.
Okay.
So a quick question about, while, while we have you, Steph, is the evaluation form itself, I feel like we've kind of inherited it over the years?
Yep.
Who has control over changing the evaluation form? Would that be us or would that be Kate or would that be you or?
I think it's a combination. I think that, you know, you kind of look at it, pick it apart, see what you'd like to see, how you'd like to change it. And then we can certainly talk to Kate and find out what's legal and what's not. Yep.
There were, this was, this goes back at least 15 years or 12 years. And this form, there were at one point, or there was at one point, two separate. Forms that had different questions that. Some people had one, you know, they, they'd be distributed and somebody would be given one form and another, another person would be given another form. So at one point within the last 12 years or so. One form became the form and I don't remember, you know, what year that may have been. But I don't remember any instruction given to us that Chris described. Perhaps it was there, but. But again. The form itself has been around for a long, long time. And I think at one point, Becky, you used to distribute the forms to us via email and say, hey, here's the form. And it wasn't that it was coming, you didn't develop the form. It was just that was the way the. The process worked. It was like, okay, Becky will send everybody the form, get it in back to us within, you know, two, three weeks and et cetera.
Yeah. Was developed by Bill Crenshaw. And even the instruction sheet that Chris is referring to. Okay, thank you. All right, so.
Are we still kicking Greg around? We would kind of discuss on the evaluation. I know David and Armin discussed a little bit of, you know, what, what their opinions of Greg and. I'm hoping, I'm looking forward to a year where we don't have the issues that we've had in the years that he's been on board, which is, you know, the ongoing. Green metal roof and asbestos issues would segue right into COVID and everything else. I, I would really like, you know, I appreciate everything Greg does and I agree with everything that David. And I'm both say on the positive side. And I really like to see, you know, where Greg goes and where he takes a town in a year when there isn't a pandemic. And there isn't a, you know, a catastrophic event taking place in one of our school buildings. That's threatening the opening of school and the kids' health and the teachers' health and mental well-being. And just, I'm, you know, I appreciate every, you know, the growth, Greg, and. I mean, we hired you, we were all on, I think we'd all agree, we were on, you know, fresh ground for everybody in a, you know, and. Start from ground zero type of thing and grow and the growth has been fantastic. But I'm looking forward to. Hopefully a year without some of the stresses of the pandemic type things and the green metal roof things that where we can see where we can go with Greg. And, you know, look forward to it. So. Appreciate, appreciate it.
Thank you, Chris. Jess?
I'll, I'll just note on top of everything else, I agree, so that on even smaller timeframe than than David mentioned of six months, the last couple of months have been especially difficult and. With Megan's absence, with the passing of Cheryl Kane, with, you know, the town accountant retiring. So I just wanted to acknowledge that this particular even shorter period of time has been very difficult and that, that. I do appreciate the very hard work, not only that Greg is doing, but the entire town staff is doing to, to keep us moving. While, while short-staffed and under, you know, unusually difficult situations due to the pandemic. So I just appreciate all the hard work.
Great.
By the way, since Becky and, since Becky and Steph are here, that goes for you guys too, and the whole, the whole staff that has been under the same pressures for, for, you know, 18 to 24 months steady. So. Hopefully you guys get some relief. You two, you two, you two, Justin, maybe it won't snow this, maybe it won't snow next week. I don't know. Well, it hasn't been easy.
No, I, I.
Joanna's online too, so.
Oh, yeah, Joanna, sorry.
No, it's fine. No, I echo my board members sentiments with a lot of this. I, I would love to see the non-crisis Greg. Fantastic.
I don't even know what that looks like.
Exactly.
Let him out of the basement.
Yeah.
But I, but I will, I do, I do say the same thing because, you know, that it does show, you know, the amount of work that the staff and that you are putting in. To make it seem like the town is running seamlessly. When we've had all of these changes and, and upheavals and challenges is, is very impressive and, you know, obviously. It's a kudos to you. It's also a very big kudos, obviously, to town staff. And I really look forward to. Like you say, like Chris says, I look forward to seeing you thrive in an environment that is not. You know, constantly trying to overcome a crisis. So, you know, hopefully that will be soon.
I agree. Thank you. I do, I, Madam Chair, I do have some remarks because I did get to read this over the weekend.
Excellent. Good, good, good. Go ahead.
No, very good. I appreciate, I greatly appreciate the thoughtful feedback that the board has offered in my review. And I did spend the weekend reflecting on the valuable input. I'm deeply committed to serving the residents, employees, volunteers, businesses and visitors of the community of Maynard. And as any leader should, I recognize and welcome input on key areas of growth. Because, because there was areas of growth, I, you know, it's in there and I do want to, I definitely, I definitely read that. I plan to work with my team and the board to define actionable next steps. For example, based on the feedback offered, I hope to explore the potential. For setting up a skip level meeting series where I meet with town employees who don't directly report to me. I also plan to work with senior staff to get input and suggestions to ensure that all employees feel valued and empowered to do their best work. And while these are no means, the only next steps. I hope to offer insights into the goal setting I plan to do in collaboration with others to ensure measurable growth. I thank you again for this opportunity to reflect on my accomplishments and goals and I look forward to continued partnership and service to the best interests of Maynard.
Thank you very much. And you just came up with that off the top of your head, right?
Yeah, exactly.
No.
Yeah, no. Your wife wrote it for you?
I cannot say that she did not offer a lot of advice.
No, but, but we, and we do, you know, and, and I appreciate that, you know, I appreciate you taking the time and really, you know, and really reading, reading it and, and taking it to heart and, and we're. You know, I, I think that, you know, Manners is in a good place and, and. I'm really looking forward to what the next, what the next year brings.
Well, me too. And something, and I, of course, the staff is vital. So Justin is a, is a vital part to the day-to-day. Stephanie kind of keeps everything rolling in, in. I don't know. It's like the lifeblood is money and, and personnel and Stephanie kind of keeps that rolling for me. And from home, by the way, so I'm really impressed with that. And then Becky, of course, kind of keeps me. Out of trouble for the most part every day. And then so, so no, and then everyone else who's not, I see Joanna, Joanna, by the way, coming through with like, like a clutch in the middle of like a turnover from town clerks. Like. She did a presidential election. On her like first day as town clerk. So I, I have to say like any of my successes is actually a measure of all their successes. And so, but I, I, I came to this job expecting that to be. One way to look at my role is to, is your chief of staff. So I am, I am the administrator of the operations of town hall and, and I meet the goals or the. Intentions and the vision of you being the executives that as, as many as a whole. And there, I don't think there's ever going to be a normal year. I, but I, I do. But it's like, we have like a general sense of how things might supposed to work in a normal year and then the trust crisis has just come up and up and up and up. But it's all good. I appreciate your cooperation and your patience with me and I look forward to working with you in the future.
I like the skip level meeting idea.
Yes.
Implemented, it's, it's, you know, if, if my boss is coming to talk to my employees, it's not as threatening if I know he's doing it for everybody across the board. So I think that's, that's a nice way to.
Yeah.
That's right.
Tackle that.
That's Allison Johnson. Her name is Allison Johnson. She's a, she's a management consultant to Greg Johnson alone that you have to.
All right. Anyone else have any other? Comments before we move along? All right. All right. Thank you, Greg. And we will transition right into the town administrator report.
Right. So as Armin alluded to earlier, the economic development committee town report is in there and that, that, that committee is appointed by myself. But it is important, obviously, to, to my recommendations to you. They're, they're key. I seek their advice often. And I thought it was important to, to share that. Armin had asked, but I fully agree that it is something that, that needs to be shared. I think they've made a lot of progress and they'll continue to evolve. Their personnel have changed somewhat. They also haven't had Megan in the last couple of months. But I think the town is going to change a lot and the economic development committee is, I think, there and ready to receive the changes and help kind of guide us going forward. I had also mentioned about Maya Health in that section, but I had already talked about that earlier. A couple of other things I do want to touch on is we're still trying to work on a vaccination clinic. It is, is. It's more obstacles than I thought there was going to be. And not, not that I didn't think there wasn't going to be a lot of it, but the, the, the information that we're getting from the state level changes very regularly. So. Even today, I had a conversation with Amy Lovell, as Council on Aging Director, who had gone to like a Commonwealth-wide Council on Aging Directors. Meeting call and, and everyone is. Voicing their frustrations. Some towns will start a vaccine clinic and then the vaccines don't show up or, or it's. And so I think the state is still trying to figure out like how they're going to strategize better and, and then, but all of those changes. We're trying to roll with it here on the town level. So we're still making progress, but I cannot say if or when we will have a vaccine clinic here in Maynard. It is, I still think it's, it would be. Quite valuable to have one in Maynard, particularly for those residents that aren't able to drive to. Foxborough, but even maybe they can't even drive as far as Marlborough. You know, like if we can, if we can have it here in town, I think that would be key. So that we're working on those plans, but some of it's out of my control. I'm trying to see if there's anything else I want to point out.
Are you done with vaccines? Because I have a few questions.
Of course.
So. Is our Board of Health allocated? I believe it was 100 vaccines. So Mike, is that continuous? Do we, if we're not able to use them now, do we get to keep using them, build them up until we are able to?
No, you get 100 a week, my understanding is. And so, and if you don't use those 100, you, you get penalized, I believe, like the, the, the state doesn't want to, which makes sense. The state doesn't want to give 100 vaccines out if you're not going to use it. So. But so simultaneously, we're considering starting, the waiting list, actually, you mentioned Jeff. So we're trying to get a waiting list system in place. I had a call today with a firm that might be able to help us out with that. And then, and that way, let's say, again. It's a big if, if we have a vaccine clinic. We get 100 shots, 96 people show up, we go to that waiting list to go to the next, you know, 97, 98, 900. And go from there. There, there's, but even that has some complications. Let's say those people got their shots already, but they were on my waiting list. So, you know, we'd have to keep going down the line. Or then if, I also don't want people to think just because you're on a waiting list. That you should not pursue every other means possible to get your shot. So. It's, this is, it's a challenge.
How, how, how long before the first week in which we were supposedly able to get these 100 vaccines, where we notified that that system would be in place?
I couldn't tell you. Like, what do you mean? Like.
Starting, starting tomorrow, you'll get 100 vaccines a week if you're ready to handle them? Or did they give us some more warning than that?
Not much more warning than that, but I think that, that, I think that's changing. But here's my initial understanding.
No, they, they put that policy into place, what, I think, two or three weeks ago, right?
Yeah, not that long ago.
So we didn't, we didn't get informed a month before that. We got informed, what, a week before that?
Probably something like that. I don't want to be misleading, but it was very short. It's like every day we're getting like different information.
All right.
We're having regular meetings with, like a pretty large team, actually amongst, I kind of listed some of them that, that we are. Trying to stay on the same page and making progress together. We got the fridge. So now we need, we need standing order signed by medical doctor and then we need, we need to get in the pipeline with the state and then, and then. And then I don't know what the strategy is. Like if the state is going to give us, we'll be ready to receive. Like we'll get the volunteers ready. We got some firefighters that can give shots. We'll, we'll do a vaccine clinic.
Do you know what the timeline?
I would say probably, wait a second. If, no, do I have a timeline when that happened? No, I do not. Do I have a timeline on how quickly it would be? If I can get it, if I can get the doses on Monday, I'll have the clinic on Friday. Like that's how quickly I could get a turnaround.
How, I'm sorry. What I'm asking is how long from, let's say now until we're ready to receive doses, assuming they were instantaneously available?
How long until we're ready to receive?
As far as the, as far as.
I don't know, because it depends on how quickly it's processed. So, so if we get the signature from the doctor and it's all submitted to the state, I don't know how long it takes to get that turnaround and processed by the Department of Public Health.
Okay.
Great. Is 100, is the number 100 a, a set in stone number? Because I've heard from, heard from a couple of people that they, that are, sometimes they're getting a little more than 100, sometimes they're getting less. Is that, do you know, that, do you know what the facts are on that?
No, I don't know if it's set in stone. That's just what I was told. Kelly Polichon said, that's, that's the guidance that they got amongst the local boards of health.
Health, the show of boards of health over in the, that Stowe's part of. There, I think there are 16 towns and I had heard they got 200 for 16 towns.
Right, yeah.
But it was again divided.
That's what I heard, that it was a, it was a kind of a moving target as to exactly what you got each week, but that, you know. I mean, I just, I just didn't know if you guys had heard anything officially along that line.
My biggest fear, and I'm sure this is something that, that people share as far as this goes, is that. I saw a news article last week from, I think it was the town of Burlington that had their entire clinic set up, ready to go. Appointments made and everything. And at the very last minute, the state didn't provide the vaccine. So they had to call all of these people who were waiting. So they had to call all of these people who were waiting and and tell them no. Um, and then, I'm assuming, had to reschedule them to when the vaccine was going to come. Um, and that's, so when we do have whatever rollout, if we are going to have a rollout. I want to be darn sure that we're gonna be able to provide for our residents. And we're not going to have to do something like that. Um, I would rather take time in the process than try to rush it and end up doing something, end up some, with something like that.
This, this is why the waitlist is important. So you know, you know, you know, the next one hundred comes in, you're in that group, or you're not going to be in that group. And you know, you'll have to wait a little bit. So you're setting the correct expectations and you don't call them in until you physically have them from the state. Cause you know they're going to be an unreliable partner at this point until they can prove otherwise.
Yep.
Um, are we physically, so you said we got the, the storage capabilities in, so I think that equipment was on backorder. You're saying that comes in and we're now able to physically store the vaccines. Is that correct?
Yes, yep, yep. Justin's on his head, but, but. Kyle Brainerd is the Assistant Facilities Manager, and he got him. It's in dispatch, because we needed someone to moderate twenty percent.
So whose vaccine is it? Is it, um, the?
Oh, who is it? Stephanie, who's?
It's Moderna's?
Yeah, it should be Moderna. That's what we should be getting.
Yeah, yeah, cause, yeah.
Because we have the fridge, not the freezer.
Correct, right.
Okay.
Anything else, Jeff, before we move on?
I think that covers it for me.
Uh, Greg?
No, so I was just gonna say, we'll keep the, we'll keep the, the board, the public. You know, as informed as possible. Amy Lovelace is doing, I think, as best a good job as she can be, trying to do the same, like on through her newsletter, through her website, through phone calls, her and Pat Kozak. They're trying to keep people informed. Uh, but I, again, if whoever's listening to the public, I encourage you. Don't wait on us, like, don't hold your breath. Uh, we will try to get a clinic, but but seek out other opportunities you can, according to the state's party listing and whatnot. Um, and and get that done. A couple of other things I want to highlight for the town administrative report, and of course, I'll, I'll be happy to receive. But I, I like to highlight what the other departments are doing. So, um, Justin had a pretty thorough report about Christmas trees. So if you, if you find out how we're doing with Christmas trees, are you curious? As it turns out, we may have been collecting a lot of trees from outside of Maynard, and, uh, and that's, that's the bottom line.
Either that or they found a way to get rid of them without having to bring them to the town.
Yeah. Though, learned a lot, learned a lot. But I appreciate Justin, of course, and the rest of the crew that was manning those Christmas tree hours. And, um, and, cause it's, it's an important service, and I was glad, I'm glad that Justin helps out doing that. And, um. Town clerk is up to a lot, uh, uh, you know, Joanna is always, always on, on top of things, as she is still even right now. And annual census is out there, uh, dog licenses are due back in two weeks, uh, so make sure everyone is staying on top of that. And it was a absolutely fantastic report, I think, uh, this week in particular, from municipal services. So that's Katie Young and Bill Numzer and. And Rick Asman even, and and Janelle Franklin, who's downstairs, uh, with municipal services, they're doing a lot. And, uh, so I hope Megan is very proud when she comes back about the progress they've made, and they're working their tails off. So I appreciate that. Alright, that's it, Man of Terror.
Great. Does anyone have any other comments about the town report before?
No, I'm waiting for, I'm waiting for, um, Megan to come back. We'll get some pictures in there again, some drawings.
I was adding pictures.
Greg, um, I have one quick question. You, it's sort of a segue from what you were just talking about municipal services. The last bullet that they have on there is the one twenty-four Acton Street, um, parcel, which continues to come up, you know. Periodically, every six months. Uh, there, I think I raised the concern that, um. I had been notified that there is a paper street at that location that, um, you know, and now I see on this bullet point that they say that their intent. Is to, um, to expand crime lab facility, which, um, you know, whether or not, I don't know if that's their. Their plan or not, you know, I know that they might need land or whatever. At one point, they were talking parking or or whatever. I think we need some clarity, if possible, about this paper street and whether or not there's any way that we could. Preclude that property from being developed as residential property. So that when, if we were to move forward with a land swap, as they're proposing, that we know what we're. We're not getting ourselves into a situation where, um, you know, unforeseen circumstances.
Right, okay. Yep, so, so I, I was reluctant to kind of bring it to the board until we knew kind of like what the actions were going to be in, in. For this particular topic, as then, as you can see, like, we're still working with legal counsel.
Then, then no need to talk any further, as long as that issue is, is at least being explored.
Oh, okay, very good. So, but I, I thought there was going to be some urgency, because we were thinking about getting it on for the warrant. Uh, or else I would have probably already had you meet the, I can't remember the names of the owners, but, um, uh. When, when it's kind of like fleshed out exactly how we're going to approach this and that, what, when it may not, oh, let me mute somebody.
Alright, so it's not, it's not expected to be on this warrant?
No, it's not, not anymore.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else have anything? Alright. Uh, then we'll move along to my report. Um, I have to be honest, I didn't prepare anything for tonight, but I do want to thank my board members and the members of the finance committee. Um, the members of the school committee and town staff and school staff that joined us on Saturday for our annual, um, budget meeting. Um, I thought that it went really well. I thought that there was a lot of information that was shared, uh, and that it, that was recorded. I'm not sure if it's on W A V M yet, but if not, it should be. Um, it's also, it was also, uh, streamed on Facebook, so you can find it on, on our. On the town's Facebook page, um, if you want to listen. And it really does, it did provide a lot of good information, um, from a lot of different perspectives. And, uh, and I think that that's the most important part is, uh, there are a lot of, there are a lot of people who have a lot of different opinions, so. Um, it's helpful to hear it out and move forward. Um, and that's all I have for today. So, uh, Chris, do you have anything?
No, I was just gonna say the same thing about, about Saturday's, um, Saturday's meeting. Just heard, you know, don't usually hear much about our meetings, but I did have. A couple of people email me or text me about Saturday's meeting and I praise, you know, I praise for everyone involved in the process. So that was all, so I'll have.
Good to hear. Uh, Jeff?
Um, yeah, I'll, I'll add my sentiments, uh, to everybody who attended on Saturday. That was, um. Uh, enjoyable for a three-hour meeting, I'll put it that way, so.
It flew right by.
What's that?
I said it flew right by.
Flew right by for a three-hour meeting, absolutely. Um, I did have one other thing, uh, a few weeks ago, there was, um. Uh, some, some noise, uh, issues downtown wherever Source was doing some overnight work. And I wanted to bring this up to the rest of the board, uh, to see about the context of, of putting in some sort of noise or nuisance bylaw. I know we have individual zoning type of things, such as permitted hours, uh, that we're looking at, um, you know, over at Maynard Crossing, et cetera. Um, but, you know, I think EverSource was coming in and doing loud work, uh, throughout the night in a way that was preventing residents nearby from sleeping. Uh, and it seems even if this was the only time it could have been done, there at least could have been a system of warning, or they could have, um, you know, come to us. Uh, if, if they're going to be working through the night, uh, that way. So I, I reached out to, uh, to Greg and the chief. I didn't see anything that was too strict from the kind of state level. Um, uh, it was that, what the chief sent back actually looked like it was mainly covering brothels, which was not exactly what I was concerned about from EverSource. So, um, I, I wanted to, acknowledging that there probably are, um, unintended consequences if we put in just a kind of a, a solid noise bylaw. I wanted to bring it up to this group and see if this has been discussed before, um, and why we don't have one on the books. And if, if we can craft one that covers exceptions for emergency or for DPW to do snow removal, et cetera, et cetera. Um, why can't we get one on the books or at least get that process started?
Uh, if I, if I may, Justine, to talk about historic issues relative to the, uh, noise or nuisance bylaw. We have tried several times to craft, uh, a nuisance or a noise bylaw. And i- it becomes very, very difficult, because when you, when you start to, to itemize, you know, first off. There's issues even from the level of how do you, i- if you put a decibel level, then who has the decibel meter? Um, then if you put in times, time limits, it affects some of small businesses relative to. Um, you know, landscapers who want to begin work on eight o'clock on a Saturday morning and, but you can't do it until eight fifteen. Or whatever the time may be, and it's too loud and whatever. Um, then there are other, there's always been, when we've devised them and crafted them. There has always been a level that gets too far, and it, then it falls apart. So, uh, I, I think that this, that, that something could probably be developed that would work. And even a little bit, uh, you know, something is better than nothing to control things. But I'm wondering, um, so that's the, that's my basic answer to your question, but I'm wondering if, what, what I heard about that whole thing with N, with N-Star or whoever it was working down there. Was it was lighting that was the issue. It was too bright, not noise. Did you hear noise? I heard light.
Uh, I heard both. Um, I, I mean, I'm a little, you can invest in some curtains that will block out the light, but it's harder to block out noise sources. So I think that's, that's more my concern in terms of what a resident could, could affect.
Oh, yeah, I, I get that. I, I, but that particular issue down there at, at Green Star, um, I, I thought was just that they had. They had like Kleeg lights going twenty-four seven, um, over the weekend and, and people couldn't sleep because of it. I had not heard that it was noise that was the problem. I just heard light, but either way, that would, you know. Presumably, a nuisance bylaw covers, uh, light as well as noise. Um, but again, the, the problem is, you know, we've gone to other towns, we've pulled their bylaws to look at what they have, and then we bring it in. And it always raises, you know, somebody says, what? You can't, you know, you can't start your, y- you know, if, if you have to get to work. At, at seven o'clock in the morning, and you have to snow blow your, your property. And the noise says you can't start, you can't have electric machines until seven o'clock in the morning, you can't snow blow your, your driveway until seven o'clock in the morning. You know, that type of thing always comes up to, to bite us. And so that's the problem, is how do you control and how do you find? The way to make it work. But.
Brought it up, Greg, uh, Jeff, because I actually, I, obviously, I saw the Facebook post also about the residents complaining about this. And I had forgotten to follow up to see if there was, you know, a lot of the frustration, it sounded like people, a- as they were venting, were saying. That it was the town allowed it, the town allowed it, why did the town allow this? And I was curious if there's any kind of process that is supposed to take place, that maybe EverSource didn't. Let us know, like, it, it would seem like something like that, that somebody should have been notified that's. You know, and we shouldn't have found out on Facebook, I guess, it was my point.
Justin, had anyone notified you of, ahead of time, that they were going, I mean, we knew that Green Star needed work done. But I, I don't know if we knew when they were coming. Justin, did you have any heads up?
Yeah, so as the representative for the towns, it's our responsibility to be the, um, authority in regards to town property. So if EverSource was performing work on town property, they would have let us know. Seeing that that was actually private property, they're not required to let us know, and we don't have bylaws in place. Um, typically, with private property, if there was a call for a detail, they would have contacted the police department. But there probably wasn't a call for a detail after we saw the pictures of the location and know exactly where it is. Um, the problem with some of those ordinances, um, just so you know, I deal with, uh, uh, city ordinances prior to this. Prior to coming to the town of Maynard, and bylaws are the town's version of city ordinances. Most city-town ordinances, um, are very loose when it comes to emergency operations. And EverSource could have, even if we pushed back, they could come up with a technical reason for why they needed to perform it at that time. Under an emergency situation. It's very hard when you deal with the utility, as they kind of have some free rein. Um, as the aspects of the utility are very vital.
I mean, but in that particular case, we knew that work had needed to be done how long ago?
Not that long. We wouldn't, yeah, and again, we wouldn't be, uh, consulting with that at all. I think part of, uh, Thomas Moore's concern with, um. With some of his communications was based off the work order system that he puts in. Again, EverSource would never let us know that, even, uh, the electrical inspector would loosely know that that was going to happen. Based off of, um, conversations with the electrician, if it had anything to do with a, a service connection. But really, we wouldn't be, uh, the town wouldn't be.
But my point is that, that wasn't an emergency. They could have done that the next night or two nights or at another particular time, right? That's not a, that's not, you know, and that's not saying that couldn't have been rescheduled.
Y- that would be an argument with EverSource. I would just tell you, in the past, they're going to tell me it's an emergency, even if we push back. And they're going to come up with a reason why it's an emergency. They could say that they are limited staff and due to X, Y, Z, that they had to perform it at that time. At that location during this situation. It's very hard. Typically, EverSource is, is usually pretty good. They have a robo-dial, kind of like a reverse nine-one-one, like our hyperreach program. Where when they do a phase cutout, they typically pre-contact the butters. I don't know if they perform that. When we had the, um, the bell removed from the church, um, in regards to the historic commission. That was our request. So again, I was intimately involved with EverSource, but I, um. They performed a nine-one-one or a reverse robot call system to all the butters prior to the loss of power at night. And the loss of power in the morning while that, while that work was being performed. I don't know if they did the same on private property.
So, yeah, so I, I hear what you're saying, Jeff. I also hear that there are definitely a lot of, of hurdles. But, you know, it's, it's something that we can look at, consider. I mean, I, I do understand. I, I saw, you know. I, I heard the frustration of the residents as well. Um. I just don't know if, even if there had been a bylaw, if that would have changed.
Well, even, even if they still, that was the time where they would do it, even if there had been at least warning for the residents. That would be an improvement over the situation that did happen. Um.
Let me send a message over to whoever I could find as contact for EverSource. Typically, my interactions with them is about storms. But I, I can, I can, I'm sure they have, off the top of my head, I don't remember, but I, they probably have some government liaison rep. Um, and I could just say like, hey, what happened the other night? Like, you know, give us a little heads up next time. I don't know if they reply, but I could, I could give them a shot.
Alright, bye. Let me know once you follow up with them.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Alright, anything else, Jeff?
No, that's it.
Okay. Um, I have forgotten who I've had. David?
Uh, yeah, I, I have a quick question for Greg. Um. Based on the conversation that we had at our last meeting with the folks over at, uh, one twenty-nine Parker Street and, and, uh. The P-trees and all that, is it possible to ask Angie, um, to analyze? The tax revenue that would be, um, recognized by the current proposed. As the project exists today, tax revenue that exists today from that particular building. As it was proposed and written in our development agreement versus the tax revenue that would be regenerated. The delta that would be generated, if any, with the proposed project or, or change in zoning. That they are seeking for that particular property. Um, so that, you know, because I think the direction, if any, that we gave to the planning board might have been a little nebulous. Relative to what we actually want them to do, um, at the planning board level. Okay, I don't know if they really, uh, you know, that we told them to analyze the, the potential for, uh, a zoning change. But at the end of the day, um, you know, what are they going to tell us? Well, yeah, we can do it. No, we can't do it or whatever. Bottom line is going to be, what's the benefit for Maynard? Um, if any. So I'm hopeful that at least that can educate us a little bit on a potential benefit or lack of a benefit. Um, keeping in mind too, for all of us, and this is just a general comment, that we have two, two, at least two taxpaying businesses already that are in that industry. That are currently in business and may be affected in one way or another by, uh, another business being put in. At that location. Um, so would we lose revenue from any of the other ones? Is one of them going to move? So there would be a net debt negative, you know, or net nothing generated? Because, you know, we have the revenue already and we get it now at the new location. So I just want to see what, what, to begin with, if we can get an analysis from Angie, so that we have something to sort of think about. When we're talking about whether or not we want to sponsor a zoning. So that we have something to sort of think about when we're talking about whether or not we want to sponsor a zoning change. Um to that location. Uh other than that, my other comment would be to echo what Justine said at the outset, uh relative to Saturday's meeting. Um and really, and I should have said this during the comments when we were talking about Greg. Greg, I thought you did a fabulous job with your presentation of, of the budget and answering the questions that came to you. And that's sort of consistent with what I was talking about, about during this development of this budgetary process. I think that all of your presentations, you've been very good at the Budget Subcommittee. You know, the presentations, the Budget Subcommittee with all of the iterations of the budget as they've come along. And uh I think you should be commended on that, but especially on Saturday. I thought you did a fabulous job.
Thanks, Dave.
Great. Thank you, David.
It's because I wasn't in the basement.
He's on his game.
Yeah, now I'm back to cold in the basement, that's all.
Armand?
Uh just to quickly follow up on David's regarding one twenty-nine Parker. When is that on the planning board's agenda? Yeah, do you know?
They just scheduled the workshop. Uh I don't remember off the top of my head.
Cause it'll be, it'll be good to kind of get an idea, and I think David brought up some excellent points about, kind of, think about this. How is this going to benefit our town? I mean, if it, if, if it's um, if it's something that benefits them and not the town, we got to look at that. And how does it affect and what's the consequences to the other businesses in town, to David's point? And then just to echo in, in regards to Saturday's meeting, I got a lot of people also making, you know, uh great comments about our meeting. Um and obviously, it has a lot to do with the preparation that was put in place. And, and there was a great discussions. In fact, some, someone mentioned that, you know, discussions like this maybe should take place more often. And I think that's something that we should keep in mind, and I know we used to have the tri-board meetings. Uh maybe that's something we should revisit and be, bringing back. Every once in a while and have meetings with other committees and have discussions in relation, not to just finances, but in general to uh what's going on in town. And, and things like that, because I think you'd be surprised how, you know, sometimes you get an idea from someone that you may not have thought about. So it's important that we hear other people's voices. Um and then a couple of things, and one of the things is in your report. Uh Greg, is in regards to April eighth, we're going to be having a public meeting in regards to the uh Powder Mill Corridor. So I think it, it should be, you know, should be important that I think as many people as possible chime in on that. Cause um uh they're looking for feedback. They are, they're going to have a report, so they'll, they'll present a report. But at the same time, they're going to be looking for feedback, continuous feedback. And then I know that um uh Chief Stowers is excited about possibly having a groundbreaking in April also. For the, for the new fire station, so he's uh, he's getting pumped up about that. I told him, I'll get him the golden shovel if he wants. But anyway, um that's all I got.
Sounds great. Alright, uh so then I will entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Alright, all in favor? Thank you, thank you.
Have a great evening, everybody.
Alright, have a good night, everyone.
Alright, guys.
Good night.